Can't hear anybody here.
I'm here.
Hi Frank.
Hey Bob. My Celtics winning?
I don't know, I haven't.
It doesn't matter, the Lakers are gonna walk away with it.
Yeah, I think so. I've had trouble following anything. This will hold it off here for a bit. Kind of feel out of touch. It's nice to touch baseball once in a while, literally, with the baseball.
It's strange with no fans. It's just. It's really weird.
Let's see, we have Frank Gale and we have Chief. So we're waiting for the mayor for a quorum there. It's the mayor. We do have a quorum. And I understand Councilmember Berkeley will probably be joining us subsequently. She had to leave for a bit. And the city manager will be joining us, I believe.
Good evening, everyone. As long as we have a quorum, thanks to you.
Yeah, we could proceed.
Okay, so we just came from closed session for since five o'clock. Rob Rappi, our city attorney representative, can you highlight what we did?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council met a closed session on the matter listed on the agenda and received information and provided some direction. And there was no reportable action taken this evening in the closed session.
All right, thank you. And that regarded California American Water Company as listed in our agenda. So let's see. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Chief Nieto, can I volunteer you or you not available for the pledge of allegiance? If not.
I'm here.
Okay, would you mind leading us through that after a moment of silence? Thanks.
If everybody could please place their hand over their hearts, their right hand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and for all.
All right, thank you very much, Chief Nieto. And so we move to the only item, which is for the city council to proceed toward making an appointment to fill a vacant seat on the city council. And we have four applicants because one applicant withdrew. So we have listed on our paperwork here Brian McCarthy, David Burnett, Duchan Tatomiravich and Peter Lay. And the process is we figure out how to decide on the order, which we could do alphabetical, which in which case Burnett would go first, or we could do it some other way. So that Burnett does not have to go first because it's my opinion whoever goes first doesn't get the chance of hearing others and maybe rebutting or modifying their presentation. But once we figure out the order, then each of the four candidates, applicants will have up to 10 minute presentation, followed by council asking questions. And then the public will be allowed to ask questions, four minutes per public person. After that, we'll move into voting and we'll discuss how that works when we get to that point. So I think the council should decide, you know, how do we decide on the order? And if staff has any suggestions, maybe we start with your suggestion and then council can modify or come up with something else. Before we do that, let's go Frank. I'm so sorry. I wasn't doing my job here. Frank, go ahead.
I just wanted to go on record that Duchan was a client of mine on a matter when I was an active attorney, probably 15 years or so ago. There's no conflict, didn't involve the city, but I just thought I'd go on record that that existed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And one of my questions is going to be asking the applicants what their relationships, their transparency purposes are with the four of us elected. Okay, so staff, do you have any suggestion on how to order the four presentations?
Mr. Mayor, the only other alternative I would think would be just to draw names out of a hat.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chief Nieto. And you can use an electronic randomizer, which you can share with the public. If anybody wants to bring that up on Google and.
Well, I trust you Tina and anyone who else wants to look at it, but can you run that for us? Or does Lane Long, our city manager, or assistant city manager Matt Mogason have any other ideas? Sounds like a good one to me. Lane and Matt, you're both muted at this point.
I can look up what Tina was talking about. It'll take me a few minutes.
Go to www.random.org backslash list backslash.
Sort of an electronic hat.
Yeah, and does council have any concern in this regard, you know, any concern to do something other than alphabetical? It just doesn't seem totally fair to me.
The only thing that I would say is whatever order is that is random is fine.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that each person's giving their 10 minutes. But if you're asking questions, are you tending to do that round robin? Or you're asking all of your questions of the one candidate?
That's a very good question. And I would suggest that we ask the same questions to all candidates, but.
And so if if that were the case, let's say that Peter Lay was first in his presentation. Whoever was second would be number one in the question round in that you just keep the order, but you you move through it on who answers first.
Okay, I didn't really understand that, but I appreciate, you know, revolving who answers first if we're asking them all the same question.
But the council questions would follow the four presentations.
Right, and then we get to the public. Right.
Correct.
Okay, so while you're figuring out the random, I'm going to close my blinds because it's blinding me. So I'll step away for 30 seconds.
So Matt, do you have that pulled up?
I believe so. Let me make sure we're talking about the same thing, Tina.
And since Aaron pulled out, yeah.
That's.
Okay. Well, when everybody tells me, I'll hit randomize. Okay, ready? All right. There's your random order. All right, do. Peter, Duchan, David and Brian.
Okay. Does anyone want to raise their hand if they object to this process, especially the four applicants? We want to make sure we start off on a good foot here. Nobody thinks that they've been unfairly considered.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I was a bit late to the meeting. Are we doing a random selection and for each question round robin?
We're just gonna random selection of who goes first, second, third and fourth. We only have four candidates remaining. And they give up to 10 minutes and then we do round robin whenever there's a question asked. So the first question asked by council following the four presentations would go to person A. The second question from council would start with person B. Gale had an idea that was a little fancy for me, but I think it's probably a good idea. I just didn't quite grasp it. But yeah, so we're going to try to do round robin on the questions. And right now, we just figured out a fair, random way of the order of the presentations. So it's presentations, council questions, and then public comment, four minutes per public member.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I don't see anyone, especially the applicants that I think everyone agrees this is a pretty fair process. So let's go then proceed with Peter Lay as our first presenter. Peter, are you doing okay tonight? It's nice to have you with us. Is everything technologically working out here, Peter, and you're ready to go? You're muted, Peter.
Good evening. My name is Peter Lay. I I hope everybody read my application and the attached letter. My name, I have lived in Marina for 81, 39 years. And you know, I have two children and two granddaughters. My wife has lived in Marina since 1975. I have a degree in Bachelor of Engineering from University of Auckland, New Zealand. And I have an executive master of public administration from Golden Gate University. I worked in Monterey County for over 30 years. I worked for City of Salinas, City Marina, Monterey County and City of Saladin. For for City Marina, I worked about roughly 22 years. And as I described in my letter, I done a lot of project for Marina, from subdivision street and signal and on infrastructure work and management and inspection and also review many, many projects. And currently, I'm a director with Marina Coastwater District. So I elected in 2018. Before that, I was elected in 2012. So I served Marina Coastwater District from 2012 to 2015. And while I was at Marina Coastwater District, I you know, spent a lot of my time, which is roughly about 200 hours a month for on the project and I in the committee and Tom Moore and I met many party in the negotiation with the KLM project. We met with KLM, Monterey County, Monterey Water Resources Agency, Monterey Water Management District and Monterey One Water. And you know, we had a lot of discussion and unfortunately, it didn't work out. But while I was negotiating with for the water district, you know, Tom Moore and I negotiated the regional urban water augmentation plan and later on it's become the public poor water Monterey project, you know, in that since I had a lot of knowledge about engineering, so I saved the district you know, seven or eight million dollars because the proposal for Monterey Water is, you know, way off and I picked out on the engineering cost estimate and yes, it was, it saved the district lot. I also serve as a member Marina Planning Commission and in the in the later year, I was a chair of the planning commission. At that time, why I was at the chair, you know, we we consider and approve the big project later. Montage Wellness Center of Eton Medical Clinic and a lot of people were surprised because how fast those two project get to approval. They didn't believe it, but it came out very fast and you know, it benefited everybody, not just Marina and the construction, you know, when so quickly. And I cited in my letter, I did a lot of service for City Marina, very difficult project, one project, Crescent Avenue improvement, you know, I was here for many, many years and a lot of council member and mayors, every election cycle, they promised they will, you know, fix the Crescent Avenue and it's always for the last it get done because it's on my own initiative. You know, I worked out the funding, the design, the construction inspection and you know, one day I was in the office and I got a like a bunch of drawing from Marina Vista, you know, student and they draw up a lot of picture and they thank you the city and me for that project because in the winter, every day, every day, they walk along and the water washed them wet, nothing done. And the other project I want to mention is at the school Marina Delma, Ocean, Clumpton, Marina Vista, you know, every month we have a big scene. Because parents came to the city council and their children, they got hit. You know, vehicle speeding now and you know, gone on year and year and the police couldn't enforce it and you know, I worked out the proposal and you look at the the arrangement at the current this school and most other city and those are my, you know, my effort. So it's boiled down, I done a lot for City Marina and even my costs during employment with the city about three million dollars, but I brought in for the city over five million dollars. And a lot of projects subdivision is, you know, very well done, will last very long. So, so why, the reason I apply for this vacancy because I have a lot of time, a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience, actual more experience and appointed positions. So I will provide my expertise in engineering, infrastructure to the council. And you know, the last week, the city and a lot of people are talking about environment choices, talking about City Marina, like the pool and minority cities. And I hope that the council will select me because I'm a minority, not just minority, but you know, a lot of qualified experience. And that makes the city look better. It's also increase the strength because I will bring in a different experience, knowledge to the council. And I cannot hold too likely position. So if I was was selected to be for vacant council seat, I will reside the director of Marina Coastwater District. I already submitted my resignation to the Marina Coastwater District with the condition that it's only affect when I am selected. So there's no conflict within the two positions. So if if I'm not elected, I will keep my seat at the Marina Coastwater District. And there's other points that I included in my letter. I don't have time to go over it, but hopefully I will answer all your question when the time comes. And for the, on the political side, you know, I'm neutral. I was, I registered Republican years ago and I dropped it down and I registered Democrat. And now I'm independent. So overall, I'm neutral, whatever best for the City Marina, I will do it. So that's my, I think, guiding principle. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Peter, and for all of your service to the city. I can tell we're going to have four very good presentations tonight. So thanks to the four applicants for what you've done and what you're doing tonight to put your your hat in the ring. We really appreciate what that takes because it's not easy. Okay, who is second?
I believe that would be me.
Okay, Duchan.
Good evening, council members and good evening candidates as well. Glad to see all of you here. Okay. So a little bit of my background, I'm a I'm a film and media person all my life. I've, I've graduated in former Yugoslavia and then did my master's program, one, one of my master programs in New York at the, at the new school and have been working in the field basically all my life. Even now, as a government employee, I work for the Defense Language Institute here in Monterey as a part of the public affairs team for the institute. So I have been living in Marina since 2009, since actually Easter of 2009 exactly. And I love it here. We actually have our, we moved from the first location where I lived near the, near the coast down there. We moved up here to Central Marina. So we now live on California Avenue. We love Marina and you know, we think we think that Marina actually, although small, should be and can be a connecting element, a hub of sorts, connecting the the agricultural part of the, of the county and the so-called well-to-do part of the county, including, you know, Monterey and the surrounding areas. Because Monterey County is really small. Monterey County is only half a million people, you know, and there is so much going on in this, in this relation between Monterey and Salinas and Marina is in the middle of it on so many levels and needs to take advantage of it for its own benefit and for the community benefit in general. So that's how I, that's how I see Marina's role and Marina's function in the future. What else can I, what else can I say about myself? My wife and I live here. I have a daughter from a previous marriage who is a about to get her master's degree in at Arizona State University. And, you know, I try to to work as much as I can for the benefit of community in addition to my regular work, you know, what what we would say nine to five, no longer nine to five with all this COVID, working from home and everything else. It's actually much longer, but that's okay. I sort of, as much as it is, you know, uncomfortable for some, I cannot say that I really mind working from home. It has its, its major advantages. So in addition to, you know, working at DLI, I also volunteer as a member of the board of the Marina Foundation. And I'm also a vice, a vice chair on the board for the former Access Monterey Peninsula, currently Access Media Productions, a public TV service that actually is broadcasting this current meeting to the rest of the community. So I'm involved there. I also am a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. So I try to keep, I try to keep him, you know, to be involved and provide as much as I can to the area, not only to Marina, but to the wider area. I find that, you know, I find that Marina is facing a whole number of issues. Some of those are obviously very popular and in the, in the media, right? These days, you know, the, the diesel plant that was supposed to be built here at the old sand mine, which for the moment at least appears to have to have been withdrawn. We don't know if, if the, the new plans will come back to haunt us again, but at least we got a reprieve of sorts. So that is something that needs to be, that needs to be looked at. And we need to continue working on it because, again, due to its position and due to the fact that you know, water is needed both on the egg side and on the the tourist side, if you will, of the, of the, of the area. We need to find an alternative supply. Is it going to be the pure water Monterey and its expansion? Maybe? Is it going to be a diesel or some other system? Whatever it is, we have to be a part of it and it has to work for us as well because, you know, although Marina does have its own water supply, we cannot be sure that that water supply will always be there. You know, it is ours, but like any other natural resource, we don't know, you know, the, the nature is warming up and that water may migrate to some other part of, of the county. You know, and then what are we? We are on a dry land at that point. And so we have to plan for the future and we have to make sure that we actually do really have a reliable water supply. And that is, that is something that that is essential for us. The other element that I'm always concerned about is affordable housing. And affordable housing is an issue that is not limited to Marina only, although it does, it does affect Marina to a great degree because Marina, for some reason, you know, probably due to its socioeconomic status, you know, gets granted with, if I'm to use, you know, a term, gets given, you know, requirements for increased number of, of affordable housing units. We have to find a way to overcome that and we have to find a way to actually maybe use our existing resources, undeveloped resources in a way that we could help and overcome the issue. One, one thing that I, I believe should be seriously considered and I know that I've, you know, I've, I've actually brought that up with the prior members of the council, but I'm pretty sure that the current, current members, members are aware of it as well is, you know, potentially getting the city to lease the Cypress Knolls area as a land lease, which would, in essence, reduce the cost of building housing and the city would retain land. That way, you know, we could develop that. That would be more affordable. People could, could live there and we would, we would kill several, several, you know, several birds with one stone. We would get rid of the blight. We would develop the area. We would increase the tax income. And at the same time, we would have, you know, we would have a more affordable housing than what we currently have because right now, an average price of a home in, in Marina is around $600,000. You know, and that is including the old stock, you know, from the, you know, from 30, 40 years ago and the new stock. So, you know, that's, that's really, that's really become, you know, quite unaffordable for a lot of people. So, you know, we complain and people often complain that we have a lot of traffic coming through Marina in the morning, heading towards Monterey and in the evening, heading back towards, towards Salinas. One way of reducing some of that traffic would be more affordable housing that we could, that we could develop. So we have to be creative. We have to be creative on those issues. You know, Marina is a mixed community. Marina is a community of dozens of nationalities. I know from my work at DLI that about 24% of DLI's international faculty, which amounts to almost 500 families, live in Marina. Okay, that's a lot. That's basically, you know, a quarter of the institute living in Marina. And those are people that come from all over the world. So, you know, we have, we, we, we need to grow that international connectivity that, you know, tolerance and all that. And I know that the Recreation and Culture Commission that I was.
Sorry, Duchan, I do have to interrupt you because it is at the 10 minute.
Oh, it is. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Oh, it is. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, sorry.
You were about to make a really good point and I apologize for having to cut you off.
That's fine.
Thank you, Duchan. Good job tonight. Now, who would be next between Brian and?
That would be David.
David? Okay, all right. Mr. David Burnett, how are you tonight?
All pretty good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Dr. Lisa Berkeley, Councilman Frank O'Connell, and Mayor Pro Tem Gail Morton. I moved to Marina in 1995 with my wife Christine and our two daughters, Deanna and Jillian. They attended Olson School and then later to Los Oblos. Marina High wasn't finished at the time, so they both graduated from Monterey High. And it's, you know, the children are always your source of pride. I have a few in-prepared remarks that I'd like to read. Let's see, where should we start? Okay. "I would like to take this opportunity to highlight some aspects of my past government and community service, which I believe makes me the most qualified candidate to fill this position. I have worked in county government for the County of Santa Cruz as a programmer and data analyst among several departments, including planning, district attorney, Superior Court, Public Works, Elections, County Clerk, Personnel, and Assessors Office, during which time I offered service as lead analyst and liaison to department directors. During my last 12 years at the county, I served as a senior GIS analyst developing web and desk-based applications to provide spatial data maps and analysis for critical county needs. And oftentimes during the tsunami and fires, our department is called on to provide maps to Cal Fire as the intermediate. Eventually, you know, Cal Fire would arrive on the scene and, and have their own maps, but in the interim, we were quite active in providing those maps. I have also served on the County of Monterey's redistricting senate committee and six years on the City of Marina's Oversight Board to the successor agency of the Marina Former Redevelopment Agency. I have been in service to our city as a member of Marina's Planning Commission for 17 years as Chair and Vice Chair. During my tenure, the Commission has helped plan and guide the development of numerous large projects, some of which are Marina Heights, now Sea Haven, University Villages, now the Dunes. In addition, the Planning Commission has conducted many hours of public hearings, listening to and incorporating public comment into resolutions presented to council. There have been many controversial decisions enacted by the Commission. In 2014, for example, I presided over the Planning Commission's unanimous decision to deny Cal AM a permit for test slant wells despite strong pro-Cal AM pressure. Always staying focused on what's best for the people of Marina, the Commission has spent many months developing a short-term rental ordinance, cannabis business license redraft and update. The Commission has worked on the general plan housing element and draft zoning ordinance updates almost continuously. I also believe my background uniquely offers a perspective around inclusion and diversity that is invaluable to our community at this time and would be an enormous asset to our council. I have developed this perspective over many years in my role in a local organization, work on systematic racism, and most recently on policing and building trust in communities of color. While my experience and knowledge are qualifiers for this position, one of my longstanding qualities that I take pride in, which I believe raises my profile above others in my respectful relation, is my respectful relationship with staff. My broad understanding of staff's work, coupled with my deep appreciation for their knowledge, the demands of their work plan, and the resource limitations with which they must address their workloads, this would make me a valuable addition to council. I believe that appreciation, that appreciation will help to set directions at the council level that is realistic and therefore will be more effective in achieving policy goals. I believe I satisfy the requirements and am familiar with city and council duties and responsibilities. I am ready to immediately fill the position. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David, for your thoroughness and your time.
I'll give back, I'll give back my time.
To the gentleman from Oklahoma. All right. Thank you very much, David. Really good job as everyone is doing tonight. So, our last applicant is Brian McCarthy. Good evening, Brian. As soon as you're ready to go, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Delgado, Mayor Pro Tem Morton, and Councilmember Berkeley and O'Connell. I'm actually kind of surprised no one else has elected to share their screen for a presentation. But you already have my application and my qualifications, which are part of the public record, and I hope you reviewed those. We are really in a time of transition. We are all struggling to balance preserving the old with the new. And that story of that balance, I think, will be told in part tonight. I'm proud to be actively engaged with you, along with the rest of the residents on this call, and helping to shape our city's future. In the weeks leading up to tonight, I've heard a lot of encouragement, encouragement from city residents. I hope after listening to each applicant, you will be unafraid to ask candid questions to help your decision-making process. I'm asking for your vote because I believe I have a lot to offer the city at this time in my life. As with all of you, it is unclear what the future holds and when and where I will be available and available to dedicate my time in the future. I've created a presentation for you that I hope helps illustrate how I can differentiate myself from other applicants. My video may be slightly amateur, unlike those from our chief biographer, Yeto. However, I thought it was the best way to illustrate some key points. As you watch, I encourage you to consider that I've heard a lot about partisan politics. The four of you know, and it would be five of you if Councilmember Eurithio was here, that I've said and done things to disagree with each and every one of you almost equally, and I'm very proud of that because I did it because my moral compass and interactions with the community drove me to do that. It wasn't personal and I remained open-minded and in a process of listening, sometimes changed my mind. Again, I hope you will consider that, especially relative to my fellow applicants. And with that, I hope you enjoy my presentation. And it's not allowing me because Anita is sharing her screen.
Okay, we'll try to work on that right now. Thank you, ma'am.
In Marina, life is as unique as the people who make up our population. Although we may sometimes look to peninsula cities for inspiration, we are unapologetically autonomous and distinct in our own right. Despite our significant challenges, we enjoy a high quality of life, due in part to our Mediterranean climate, pristine coastal shores, and diverse and friendly demographic. I am asking for your vote tonight because I think my passion, energy, and skills and my record on the issues make me the applicant to choose to fill the remaining term of the vacant council seat. I proudly advocate for Marina, not only because I know the incredible potential, but because the future of our city depends on the willingness of our residents to speak up. I proudly participated in each litter cleanups, commission meetings, including not only the Planning Commission, on which I serve, but others such as the Economic Development Commission, Nine Review Board, and Traffic Committees. To the council, I would bring a broad interest in all issues affecting Marina and our quality of life. However, I want to focus on a few specifically that I have been involved in recently. On water, I've joined you in fighting relentlessly for the protection of Marina's natural resources, including the Salinas groundwater basin from which we receive our water. Working for years with other local advocacy groups and having traveled up and down the state, speaking to coastal commissioners in San Francisco on environmental justice, state lands in Sacramento to help advocate for Marina's right to control their destiny, and other various local, regional, and state boards.
Morning. My name is Brian McCarthy and I am a resident of Marina. The Cal AM desalinization project may come before this commission in the future. Not only is the project a violation of Marina's local coastal plan, but the project is slated to extract Marina's groundwater without any groundwater rights to do so.
On the landfill, Marina residents have been subject to the odors that settle into town, in particular in the winter months. The regional composting operation seen here is thought to be the primary source. Here's what I've done about it. Marina is burdened by the environmental impacts of the regional landfill and compost facility. To that extent, I've reached out directly to the Monterey Regional Waste Management District staff, Mbar, the Monterey Bay Air Resource District, in order to manage complaints filed by citizens about the odors that settle into town, the LEA, Lead Enforcement Agency, Monterey County, but most proudly, Cal Recycle. Cal Recycle is a state agency that oversees regulation for compost facilities like the one that you see behind me. I've worked with them closely on their new environmental justice enforcement program, which I hope you will be hearing more about in the months to come. On our transient community, we must be unafraid to sit down and speak directly with the transients and homeless communities in our city. As the governor of California has said, this is our number one issue. The city has some very difficult decisions to make in the future, but we must be unafraid to engage and hear directly from the humans who are most affected. In this interaction, I sat down with a handful of our unhoused residents and discussed basic needs such as hand washing and toilets. With leaders such as yourself, locally, we've worked together on issues such as speed limits, fire sprinkler water rates, voting rights, water quality and testing issues, short-term rental ordinance, and more. I have a strong record of taking a position and advocating to ensure all are prepared to make informed decisions. Most recently, I advocated strongly for Measure Z to include language that protects our children in parks. Bringing in outside subject matter experts to speak at our council meetings was one way to give back and allow the council to make informed decisions. Further, I wrote the ballot argument in favor of Measure Z to try and share that same information with all of the citizens of Marina. On public safety, from the time I lived in Preston Park to now, I have always been a supporter of our public safety professionals. Going back over a decade, I've been on several ride-alongs with the Marina Police Department to try and gain an inside understanding and have watched the department evolve in a very short time. But also, I have been unafraid to be a critic of areas I believe might benefit from improvement. As you know, I have advocated strongly for transparency in crime statistics and I've advocated for the city to explore a citizen advisory board to better understand racial and other injustices even before the current crisis. I'm a strong advocate for increased code enforcement to help develop our city identity and have worked with residents to identify and rectify non-compliant properties. I have spent a career serving the Defense Department. In addition, as a military child and a military spouse, I have a deep appreciation for Marina's rich military history. It should be a priority to preserve this legacy at every opportunity, whether it is building upon the great work of the Black Horse Legacy, learning from our existing military veteran community, or encouraging younger military generations to participate. I am invested in ensuring the legacy remains strong. On diversity, I recognize the constantly evolving challenges to assure diversity and representation. Having been the only Caucasian to graduate from my high school and going to one of the most diverse universities in the country, I have literally been surrounded by diverse groups of cultures, races, and thoughts. Although it is true, you could make history tonight by appointing the first openly gay man to the Marina City Council, I want to be clear, this alone does not make me more qualified than any other applicant. It is my energy, outreach, and passion for the issues that does that. As a young person, I chaired the first DC Youth Pride Day and went on to be Grand Marshal for Capitol Pride in the late 90s alongside those like US Representative Barney Frank of the infamous Dog Frank Consumer Protections Act. Marina's brightest days are ahead of us. Having worked in the aviation and technology industries, I appreciate the enormous potential of the tech and aviation sector in Marina and specifically at the Marina Airport. You've heard me historically advocate to better integrate technology in our city's day-to-day business. But I also advocate to ensure we are developing a strong, technology-minded workforce to fulfill the talent gap that already exists in Marina. We must do this to ensure that our residents have a chance at newly created jobs so that not only those transplanted here will be able to fulfill them. In summary, I am a District 1 resident that is qualified, passionate, and ready to immediately move into this seat if appointed. I ask for your vote and I hope to work with you on the council. Thank you for your time and service to our great city of Marina.
Thank you, members of the council, for entertaining my presentation.
All right. Thanks to all four of you. Brian, you did a good job. Everybody had a very good presentation. We have 54 members of the public and usually the council is a captive audience. We have to stay to the end. And sometimes public drops out because they have, you know, family issues and home personal lives. So, I wanted to ask the council, you want to continue with our expected order where we all ask questions of all the candidates? Or would you rather hear from the public first before they leave us and then go to the council? It's up to the council, you know, city council, what would you like to do? Stay with the program or switch off?
Mr. Mayor, before we do this, I just, because I was here a little bit late to the meeting, I don't know if there was time or anybody mentioned ways in which they know candidates and such, but I want to be transparent here. I was requested by one of the, the candidates to meet in advance of the media, in advance of this evening. And so I sent out an email to all of the candidates and invited them to have a half an hour one-on-one conversation. And so David Burnett declined, Peter Lay said yes, and then declined Aaron Peck, who is now no longer running, and I met, Dusan and I met, and Brian and I met, each for about half an hour. And then for transparency sake, also, I've served on Planning Commission with David Burnett. And I know Brian through Citizens for Just Water. So, I just want to be transparent about relationships. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. And one of my questions to all candidates will be to ask them to briefly describe their relationships with the four of us elected officials in Marina. But, so thank you for that. Council, what's your pleasure? Go with the, the program or change the program to allow the public to speak first? I'm okay either way, but I'm just afraid that we might not keep all the public with us as long as we're going to stay here.
Are we giving four minutes, Mr. Mayor, to each of the potential speakers?
Yes, Councilmember O'Connell, that is in the, that's in, that is the plan and the packet. So, I don't think we should change it at this point unless the council wants to. We could change that. Bob Rafferty, do you have a?
I was just going to say, you're correct. That, that is what we proposed in the staff report and the council resolution they adopted.
Maybe it's worth it to see how many, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My, my thought would be to let's go to the public first. And if, if, when we finish with the public, even if they have spoken, they can stay in and listen to the questions that the council members may have.
I think the council could easily take an hour with our questions and we might lose some of the public.
Sure.
Okay, Gail, do you have an opinion, input on this?
I'm fine with going to the public.
Okay, Councilmember Berkeley?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine going to the public. I am curious how many people want to speak. And just again, as far as time, if we are going to do full four minutes or if we're going to consider maybe three minutes.
Yeah, my opinion is that we said four minutes, we talked about it. You know, if we change it at this time.
Fair enough.
Yeah, but, but, okay, Gail and Frank, do you have any input or opinion on the time for each public member?
No, we stated four minutes, so let's stay with four.
Yeah, it's in the written protocol, so I am in favor with staying with-
Good with me.
Okay, so, we're going to change the program to allow public to speak first. Just raise your hand and we will go through you. First come, first served, starting with Peggy. Good evening, Peggy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Peggy. We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Peggy. I live here in Marina. I was just calling to put in some good words for Brian McCarthy. He's my neighbor and I've known him for, oh, a little over 10 years. And, you know, with, without getting political or anything, I just really want to say Brian's a nice guy. Brian's a really good person. He's, he's easy to work with, like he's just an easy, nice person. I just watched his presentation. I knew he had an interest and was working on a lot of the things that he showed in his presentation. And he is really involved even in our neighborhood and the, the good of our neighborhood and concerned with everyone here. So, pretty much I was just calling to just say he's a great guy and I would like to see him on the city council. Are you still there?
Yeah, thank you very much, Peggy.
Did you hear me? Okay, it's my first Zoom.
You had, you had three minutes left on your Zoom cameo.
I don't, I don't need anymore. I just, I just want to say that I would really like Brian to be there, you know. Because I feel like he'd represent me well, that he really has my interest as a Marina resident at heart.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us, Peggy. Well said.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Goodbye. Okay, let's go to Nathaniel Sawyer. Good evening, Nathaniel.
Good evening, honorable mayor and honorable council members. I want, first, I'm going to say thank you to every single, uh, candidate for city council, for my friend, um, Adam Ureth, the C. Before I say who I believe should be the Marina City Council member, I want to thank every person who applied for this vacancy for city council. I want, I enjoy listening to the wealth and love for the city that Peter Lee brought to the table. I cannot, we cannot ignore his authentic love for Marina and he has mentioned being neutral. Um, next, we heard from the Dusan, who works for the Defense Language Institute and has been working in Marina since two thousand nine. Dusan poured out his heart and ideas he has for Marina. I, I, I love that. And also David Burnett is highly educated. Is an African-American man who has served in Marina for over, what, was it seventeen years? Um, he has lived in Marina since nineteen ninety-five. All I have to say is David, where you been, brother? Uh, we've been doing some, uh, BLM stuff in the city council, uh, meetings that I would have loved to hear your input on. Um, I hope we can, can have discussions after this and I get to know all of you better. Um, but I want to bring up Brian McCarthy. Brian, yes, is a white male, but he is part of the LGBTQ community. And he's, um, unapologetically a gay man who has fought for black and brown people in Marina and Monterey County in California. I have personally walked the streets with Brian, Brian. Also during the fires, thanks to Christina Medina who called me that night, she told me to come to the equestrian to help victims of the fire. When, and I, when I got there at like eleven o'clock at night, Brian was there in a sweater, in a hoodie and, um, working in the dirt, um, with people, with victims, um, helping their wounded animals get into shelter. Um, the mayor Bruce Delgado was also there as he is everywhere, um, twenty-four seven. Brian, Brian also, of course, is on the Planning Commission. He, when you talk to them, talk to him, you don't feel intimidated. And I truly believe that Brian is for Marina. You know, he is fault, um, for the water issues that we've, uh, been, that have been talked about and have been, uh, there has been a battle for, for so many years. Um, obviously, I am really acquainted with Brian, um, but that's the thing. As I've been in Marina, um, I've been to a lot of these city council meetings where I've sit and some of them were not as, they were, some of them were just being frankly boring, you know, and I'd been meaningless at times. But then there was some that were very important to the city, you know? And Brian was there, um, giving his input that may not be agreeable to some people, but he wasn't, uh, he wasn't afraid to say what he had to say. Um, again, I want to thank every single candidate that has came up. All of you have poured your heart out, but I truly believe that Brian is not just highly educated and a minority in his own right. Obviously, he's not black and brown, but I think that he would do justice for the black and brown people. Um, the only person that I believe that could be better at that seat than Brian, I'm really interested in David Burnett because he is African-American man who is highly educated. And, but I haven't seen him as much as Brian. I've actually seen Brian here in Marina doing things, action-oriented, and we need action-oriented leaders. Um, we need people to carry that torch. And I believe that every single city council member we have today is action-oriented and we need to continue that, not just talk, but walk the walk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nathaniel. And to everybody joining us tonight, we'll go next to Danielle Burchette.
Hello, everyone. Uh, just as a point of clarification, are we allowed to ask a question or is this only for comment?
I think you could ask a question and then we would, uh, get to those at the end of comment. But let me check in with council on that before we, uh, go into your four minutes. Uh, first, uh, city attorney, uh, what do you think about questions from the public?
Yeah, I, I think we, certainly questions, uh, would be in order and we contemplated that and, uh, uh, it would be, uh, useful if the, uh, the speaker would identify if, if the question is to a particular candidate or to all the candidates.
Okay, now earlier we, we discussed asking questions from council members to all candidates. We don't have to stick to that if it's not in the agenda. So let me turn it over momentarily to the council for opinions and input as far as what do you want to do with public questions? And do you want to stick to a question that gets asked of all, all four candidates or what, what do you think, city council?
So I'm not sure that a public question or even a council question might be relevant to all of the candidates.
Right.
Um, so I would let the public identify their question and identify to whom it's directed, which they could say all, or if it's a particular question applicable to one, which one are they wanting to hear?
Okay, thank you for saying more. Go ahead, Lisa.
So I'm very happy to have public ask comment, but I think that it should, all of the questions should be done at once rather than, um, public ask a question and then candidate answer. I think that we as council can write these questions down. And then when it's our turn as council to engage with the candidates, I think that's when those questions should be answered.
And that was Councilmember Berkeley. So that seems like how we normally run our council meetings, so that's consistent. Bobby, did you have something before we ask Councilmember O'Connell?
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's what we do at the council meeting.
Okay, okay, Councilmember O'Connell, do you have input?
I would just, uh, hope that the question would relate to the issues involved with the city and every effort be made to not make it personal or derogatory, of course, in, in nature. And, uh, I know that will not happen, but occasionally some people may think that a question is being asked in a general way that someone may personally be offended by it. So I would hope that the mayor would be able to, uh, watch over that as carefully as possible. Other than that, uh, mainly just sticking with the issues of the city and how the candidates would address those particular issues would be good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. So, yeah, it's freedom of speech. You can pretty much say what you want, but we sure would prefer it if you don't ask the gotcha questions of any one candidate and that you, uh, don't ask, Frank O'Connell just said, Councilmember O'Connell, don't ask derogatory or personal questions that are meant to make somebody look, look unfavorable. So, uh, but with that, uh, go ahead, Danielle, thank you for, uh, letting us think about that. So questions are fine.
Great. So I just want to start by thanking all of the candidates for, uh, committing to devote so much of their time to our wonderful city. Um, and thank them all for their time and efforts regardless of who is chosen. The, um, I want to especially kind of note that I, I don't know any of these individuals personally. I, I did think the last two presenters had particularly thoughtful presentations, um, that were well thought out ahead of time, um, and really spoke to a lot of the issues of the city. My one question that I would love to pose to every person, um, of the four was, uh, curious about their thoughts on the priorities of the diversity issues that have been brought up in recent city council meetings in the last few months, um, which they think are most important and how they see those, um, being prioritized in their minds going forward. I hope that question makes sense. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Danielle. And we'll go to Christina Dirksen.
Thank you. Thank you all for such a very good thoughtful presentation and council members for your attention to such an important matter facing our city. I have a question, um, for legal. And that is, I, I would like to state my objection to this being an open seat. The question was, uh, did we not go to redistricting and was there an ordinance having to do with we are now in districting? And having this be an at-large appointment, I'd like to hear his legal thoughts on why we are choo- choo- choosing to go, um, with this appointment at an, uh, at, at an at-large and, and, and not the, uh, districted way. I do understand that Adam's seat was district, was at-large, but we've already pre- set a precedent with the districting that we now have in Marina. Secondly, I do have, uh, a question for Gail, um, I'm sorry, for, um, David Burnett. I have been looking over four sixties, those are campaign contributions. And I know that he gave, um, a councilwoman, Gail Morton, five hundred dollars for her reelection campaign. She failed to disclose that. I wonder if legal, um, that's a question for legal, if that may put into question her vote. Um, and also another question is if anybody has run for council, I believe Mr. Burnett has, and what result was that? So I will yield the rest of my time because this is going to be a late, uh, meeting. So those are my questions. Uh, again, redistricting for legal, Gail not mentioning the five hundred dollars that Mr. Burnett has given her campaign and two minutes that he spent at the Central Democratic Committee trying to get the Central Democrats to endorse her. And, uh, lastly, uh, who ran, if he ran and what was the result? Thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you for being everybody as brief as you can. That helps us move along. I hope that it's not too late of a meeting and I think that, uh, we'll just move through this to Jackie Ambrose and then Hans, uh, Hong Chuah. Hello, Jackie.
Yes, Jackie is.
Jackie, come on back. If we can give Jackie her four minutes back, please.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you, Jackie.
Thank you very much. So, city council members, thank you so very much for this opportunity. I am so happy as a Marina resident, as a fifteen-year Marina resident, to have so many people willing to represent us. I am from District Three and I'm here to support Brian McCarthy, responsible, involved in his community and interested actively so in making a positive difference. All candidates wish to make a positive difference. I believe that after listening to and seeing some of what Brian has accomplished, his list of accomplishments, they speak for themselves, so I do not need to go through them again. However, as a veteran and as a teacher, um, I would follow Brian's example, not blindly so because he's working with others. Um, but I know Brian to be someone who listens to others. One does not have to agree with everything. One can disagree agreeably and he epitomizes this. As a teacher, I'd love my students to have some of his tenacity and his aspirations to be as diligent for the local community as he's demonstrated. One person can affect positive change, but imagine this one person working with others. The amazing change that can happen in what I call marvelous Marina. I'd love for us to use that, marvelous Marina. Um, I am more engaged because Brian is more engaged. Um, he's a go-getter. Showed that. Um, I'd be so very happy to see him serve with the other members on this team. So I think of energy, I think of outreach, I think of passion. And that would be wonderful, courtesy Brian in marvelous Marina. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie, for joining us. We'll move to Hans.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you know, there's one thing that I am curious about, um, because this is about Marina and all, I think most of the people we've heard thus far are Marina residents, but it might be helpful if we hear from people if they are actually Marina residents because it, it does have some impact as far as what our community specifically wants. So if we can ask that people require, uh, comment that they're Marina residents, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, so it's a little bit of a freedom of speech issue, uh, council, I'm sorry.
That's true.
Bob Rath, can you respond to that question?
It would be, as Councilperson Berkeley has, uh, stated, it would be appropriate if a, uh, speaker wished to reveal that information. It cannot be required of the speaker.
Sure, sure. I understand that, but it would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so we leave that up to each individual speaker if you want to identify your place of residence, your city of residence, but it is not a requirement. Let's move then to Hans and then David Brown and then Lindsey Alexander Beavers. Good evening, Hans.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Hans Hong Chuah. I'm a resident of Marina. Though I'm currently speaking to you from Bend, Oregon. I'll be brief, okay? Of the four members applying for this position, I know Dave Burnett and Brian McCarthy best, uh, through our work with Citizens for Just Water and through my observations, having watched both of them perform, both at count, both at council and committee. I favor, however, Brian McCarthy. Uh, he brings a lot of strong energy. Some people would, uh, consider it a choice between Coke and Pepsi, but it's really a choice between Coke and Red Bull, three times the caffeine. And so I, I prefer Brian. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hans, and good evening to you. We'll go then to David Brown.
Good evening, good evening, members of the city council and mayor, and I'd like to thank all the four candidates for their presentations. I would like to talk, however, briefly about where the applicants reside in light of the city's transition to district elections. And of course, I'll, I'll start with the things that are fairly obvious. And one of them is that if you appoint a District One resident, then in two thousand twenty-two, that person will be able to run for the same office. And if he or she prevails, then there will at least be some continuity in representation. Conversely, if the council were to pick somebody not from District One, uh, for example, in Districts Two or Three, well, that person could not even run in two thousand twenty-two. They would have to run in two thousand twenty-four because of those districts' election cycle. And if we're District Four, uh, there'll always be the possibility that, uh, that person would be like, would possibly challenge Councilmember Berkeley and, uh, not that that's good or bad, but rather than any of those scenarios, it seems to me that the least cumbersome, the least troublesome would be to appoint somebody from District One. And then there's the possibility of a legal issue if the city does not do that. In one sense, picking someone from a district other than one would be a regressive step backwards from the district elections that the city has already enacted by resolution back to an at-large system. And, and however, whichever system one prefers, aside from the issues that went into that, the district has embraced district elections. And is it possible if the city picks somebody from a district other than District One, whether there might be potential litigation on that? Uh, it may be not illegal according to one attorney, but on the other hand, uh, another attorney, I'm not talking about myself, I understand, has said it, it may not be illegal, but it just doesn't seem right. So there might, one could never really anticipate even a controversy over districting versus at-large because of the diversity of our city and the way people are spread out and there is no concentrations of particular minorities. But one can also, i- it, it may stretch the imagination to think there might be this type of challenge, but I think for these reasons, the council probably ought to pick someone from District One. And I have to concur with some of the speakers that Brian McCarthy is a nice guy, a really nice guy. He's soft-spoken. He listens and he's a community activist. So I would respectfully urge that you can, that the council consider picking, uh, Mr. McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. We'll go to Lindsey Alexander Beavers.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Lindsey.
Hi. Uh, hello, council members and candidates. I have been a proud citizen of Marina since two thousand eight, although my family has ties to Marina that go back to nineteen forty-four. I do not, however, have any clue what district I reside in, so my apologies for that. First, I want to say that as a city, we are so incredibly lucky to have such amazing, diverse and qualified individuals applying for this position. It really does speak to the soul of Marina. With that said, I've called in tonight to voice my support for Brian McCarthy. I think Brian would be a fantastic addition to the city council. I just actually met Brian a few months ago and I was very excited to find out that he was on the Planning Commission as he and I are pretty close in age and I find Brian to be very intelligent and more importantly, approachable. I had already been seeing his comments for several months on a few of the Marina community Facebook groups and I found his comments to be educational and helpful. When it comes to local government, I have always been curious and interested, yet somewhat overwhelmed and intimidated by process and formality. Brian has inspired me recently to speak up and to become more involved in this city. Brian is incredibly easy to talk to and has an extremely calm demeanor which I appreciate so much. The first time I met him, he wanted to know what I did for work, how long I've lived in Marina and how I felt about certain issues. I felt both seen and heard and felt like I now had someone else I could go to with questions about city issues. Brian is definitely the kind of person I want on the Marina City Council. I trust that he will continue to engage all Marina residents and impart on them the same feelings of inclusivity that he has imparted on me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Lindsay and we'll go next to Kelly Vasquez.
Hi, good evening and thank you council members for your time tonight and especially I'd like to thank all of the candidates. I was very intrigued to listen to all of your presentations and as I am not a Marina resident, but I am a small business owner here in the county and I represent quite a few small businesses in Marina and so have a lot of clients who are Marina residents. And I have also been a board member of nonprofits and an advisory council member for various county advisory boards. And so as a community volunteer, I would just like to say thank you to all of you for being willing to give of your time to the very special community of Marina. I tonight am particularly calling to put my endorsement behind Brian McCarthy. In particular, Brian's, as everyone who has spoken for him tonight has pointed out, his listening ability and willingness to be open minded and but still maintain his own morals and strength has been very impressive. And I just would like to say that his presentation tonight showed, I think, the thoughtfulness and the effort that he's willing to put into his tenure with the council. And again, I strongly endorse Brian. So that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Kelly for joining us and speaking. Next is Karen Anderson and then Mike Kennedy.
Thank you. I'm also commenting in support of Brian McCarthy to fill the vacant at large City Council seat. Since I moved to Marina 18 months ago and became involved with Citizens for Just Water Action Events, we became friends. I've admired Brian as he took on many responsibilities to speak to the California Coastal Commission during numerous public comment opportunities. He brings the facts in support of Marina's need to prevent a new industrial plant replacing the Semex plant on our shores. I trust Brian to inform me of the background information regarding current decisions facing the City Council, especially if they previously passed through the Planning Commission. He digs up the historical data and current facts as he makes his mind independently before he votes. He also listens to people's concerns and experiences. Brian and I are both involved with this with Sustainable Marina and with Brian serving as my Vice President. Jumping in to help at our many activities is natural for Brian. Recently, Mayor Delgado had the initiative to post signs expressing our gratitude to the many firefighters who came to fight the fires in our area. I was assigning locations to the volunteers when Brian and his husband Hayes realized we had an assortment of those signs and they quickly deployed themselves to give each volunteer several of each type of signs. This isn't, is a typical example of Brian's can do style. And I appreciate the chance to speak on behalf of Brian to the council and the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Karen. We'll go next to Mike Kennedy and then M. Zephyrman. Hello Mike. You show ready to go Mike, but we don't hear you. Okay, we'll give Mike a few more seconds, then we'll come back to Mike and we'll proceed to Matt Zephyrman. If we don't hear from Mike. Okay, Mike, so stay tuned. We will come back to you. And let us go now to what I believe is Matt Zephyrman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening Matt.
Hi, I'm Matt Zephyrman. I'm elected member of the Marina Coast Water Trucker Board Directors, but today I'm going to speak to you as in my personal capacity. I was really glad to hear the presentations of all the applicants. It's an impressive group. And to hear about their ideas for Marina. City Council is a big responsibility. You know, it's kind of something that people don't get a lot of credit for doing and I appreciate all the people willing to volunteer their time for it. As you know, Calam recently withdrew its application before the Coastal Commission for the Slant Wells forth proposed desalination plant. While this was a win for the Sea of Marina Marina residents and the Water District, the fight isn't over. Calam has indicated that they plan to negotiate with the city and people of Marina and get their buy-in before resubmitting their permit in a matter of months. For this reason, I think it is important for that whoever you select for the City Council seat both understand the water issues facing the city and have a demonstrated commitment to protecting our coast and our groundwater from Calam. I think you have two candidates before you that meet this criteria. The first David Burnett has demonstrated his knowledge and commitment from his involvement with Citizens for Just Water, his service on the Marina Planning Commission and his testimony at various public meetings, including the Coastal Commission and the County Supervisors. He has been so involved that Calam last year compiled a large dossier of all of his activities in support of Marina and the community. And I don't know if you've looked at it, but I think he could have submitted that as a great supplement to his application to the City Council because it really demonstrates just how much he has given to the community. The second candidate Brian McCarthy has also demonstrated his knowledge of commitment with his service on the Planning Commission and his involvement with Citizens for Just Water. First starting out behind the scenes and then being more public and testifying at various public meetings. In short, I encourage you, the City Council, to put a priority on defending our water with your selection this evening. And I think that Brian McCarthy and David Burnett are both great choices for this permission, for this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much Matt and have a nice evening. We'll go to Mike Kennedy next. Mike, if you're ready to go, we can hear you.
Yes. Good evening, good evening council members and Mayor Bruce. My name is Mike Kennedy and I am a resident of Marina. I would like to recommend Brian McCarthy to fill the position vacated by Adam. Brian is articulate, even keel and highly intelligent. He will fit in very well with the existing City Council members. And Brian has demonstrated a keen interest in what is best for Marina. Please appoint Brian to fill the open position. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mike and we'll go to Zoe Carter next.
Hi, thank you. My name is Zoe Carter and I am a resident of Monterey. Many of you know me, I'm running for City Council there and I am calling in to support Brian McCarthy. I would just like to say that I'm not really exactly sure why it matters, why I reside in Marina since many of us who are running and also sit on city councils know that we all have to work regionally together to work on many of these very important issues. And so if Brian can gather regional support now, I think that speaks a lot to his character and the work that he's done. I originally met Brian when I was at a Marina City Council meeting a couple of years ago. And we talked for quite a while about housing and I have proceeded to see him at many events around Marina that I have attended and I have been spending more and more, finding myself spending more and more time in your wonderful city. Since I have been on the peninsula more with the shelter in place. I just would encourage you that Brian, you know, does the work. He works hard. He's done the work on Planning Commission. He's brought me up to speed on a lot of city issues in Marina, including cannabis and housing. And I'm really grateful for that and I'm grateful for the work that he does and reaches outside the city and doesn't look just only inside the city. So I think that's a really another important asset for someone who is going to be sitting on your City Council and I am grateful and I watched the other presentations and I think that what he put together was a really great piece. So thank you for your time. Thank you all for your service to your city. I know it's not easy and it's can be long hours. And I know some of you are going through campaigns right now and it's also not easy. So thank you all and I encourage you all to support Brian for this appointment.
Thank you Zoe and best of wishes in your run for City Council. Okay, we'll next go to Nancy Amadeo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, good evening. Good evening candidates. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Brian McCarthy to support him. I think we have some amazing candidates. But I support Brian, having known him just for a few years. I've lived in Marina for 33. But I've only known Brian for about three of those years. However, I have found him to be intelligent. A man of integrity. And a man willing to work hard for our community. You've heard tonight about his volunteerism and his commitment to various activities that the city benefits from, whether it's it's cleaning up roads or it's speaking out for the city of Marina at the Coastal Commission in order to deal with our water issues. He has always stepped forward. When I talk to Brian, I find someone who does his homework. We've sat on the Planning Commission together. So I've seen how he's done his homework. I also see that he is not a man who forms alliances to make a decision. He thinks for himself. And that's something I really appreciate. That you come in with your own perspective. Then you listen to others' points of view, including the public. The public is a huge part of every meeting and needs to be listened to with an open mind. Brian does that. Then he tries to persuade as each of us on councils or commissions do. But while he's trying to persuade, he continues to listen. How do you fit these various ideas together? And I think the thing that has most impressed me at a very recent meeting where we didn't all agree. Six of us did. Brian was the seventh and he did not agree on a particular part of the the issue. But he voted with all of us so that the commission could go forward as a unanimous body. And that said a lot to me about his character. That he understood the value of the commission speaking with one voice. So even when you don't fully agree, you can come to a conclusion that you can all say will work for the city. And that's what the intention of both Planning Commission and the other commissions as well as the City Council is about. Coming together, finding solutions and moving forward in a way that benefits the citizens of Marina. Whether that's budget decisions, policy decisions, public decisions about water, probably our most urgent issue. He's there, he understands, he works hard and is willing to come together with the public and with the members of the organization in order to move forward as a body. So I really appreciate what Brian has done in this city. That is not to say that the other candidates haven't worked hard in what they've done. He's just my candidate of choice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Nancy for joining us tonight. We'll move to Kyle Sullivan.
Hello.
Hello.
Great, thank you. Good evening Mayor and Council members. My name is Kyle Sullivan. I am a working class 34 year old, mixed race, gay cowboy and a Marina resident living in District Three. I'm here this evening to support Brian McCarthy for the District One Council seat. Through the years, I have felt underrepresented in this community. As a member of the general public, it seems to me that it is always the same group of people contributing to our local government. I ask each of you, who on the council represents my demographic and the issues that affect me? As you are well aware, the median age of a Marina resident is about 37 years of age. The people made it very clear that they wanted this demographic represented in our local government when they elected Adam to the City Council. Additionally, this demographic, as you're well aware, has a very little participation in the community. We need to motivate and engage this next generation to ensure the city of Marina continues to support its residents and the issues that matter most to them. In our current climate, now more than ever, we need a sense of community. A community where we, the citizens, feel heard, represented, valued and safe. In the 15 plus years I've known Brian, to say he does his due diligence is an understatement. He constantly is researching topics to be sure he is well informed and making appropriate statements. As most long term friendships go, we've had our share of disagreements on many topics. Brian has always listened to both sides of the issues, agreeing or not, and validating key points presented. He always keeps an open mind regardless of his position on the matter. Brian attends community events and devotes countless hours to our city. Honestly, most of my knowledge of city happenings are from updates from Brian. He's accessible, approachable and excited to discuss issues with Marina residents. He truly wants the best for our town. Brian promotes change, the type of change that best supports our city and the people living in it. I believe Brian will bring a fresh new enthusiasm to the council. He will support change and growth while preserving the rich history and the unique feel that Marina has always had. His focus has been and always will be what is best for the residents of the city of Marina. I urge you tonight to appoint Brian McCarthy for the District One City Council seat. He's a candidate who truly represents the Marina community. Thank you all.
Thank you very much Kyle. And we'll go to Crystal Potts. Hello Crystal. You just need to unmute yourself Crystal. There you go.
I'm sorry, is it my turn?
It is your turn, but we can barely hear you.
Okay, I would just like to speak for Brian McCarthy. As a resident of Marina since 2004. I came here for school at CCMB. Moved to Marina and I've stayed here ever since and this is now my home and I've never met anybody who has fought for Marina as much as Brian McCarthy has. He knows everything inside and out, all of our measures, everything that we fight against, everything that we need to do to make this city better, to grow, to just be better in and out, even our own little neighborhood. Brian is the person to go to. And on top of that, he has the vote for LGBTQ plus. As a person who's involved in that community, he is a person who fronts that. And to see somebody in this community who actually has a part of that because we don't have that on the, on the City Council from what I've seen. It's great to see it. And this is somebody who cares about this community, who, who actually researches it. I mean, look at the presentation he had compared to everybody else. I'm not sitting here telling you as somebody who has a researched, you know, speech, I don't have anything before me. I'm telling you from a personal experience. Brian McCarthy is the person to vote for. As a person who's been on Rotary in Marina, the City Council has, I've known all their members from Gary to Isla to Gary's you know, father to Bruce, all the way down, even Nancy Amadeo. I've been there for all these people, but I'm looking for someone who will actually sit there and vote upon things in Marina for Marina citizens. Not because they believe on one thing. I feel like the entire Marina Council has been focused all on the Bruce side of things. I need something that is more determined upon the Marina population. We all need to be able to look at the fact that we have different things going on in the city. There are people who believe in one thing and who don't believe in another. There are people who believe in one thing and who don't believe in another. So how are we gonna be able to focus on that if we have everybody on the Marina City Council who's backing the mayor? That's not what we're looking for.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Jeff Corine. I'm stealing some time. Oh, did they? What happened? No, it went to four minutes.
So thank you, just one moment please Jeff. Just one moment please Jeff. I want to say thank you to Crystal. And you're calling in on the same phone, Jeff? Is that what's going on?
Yeah, I'm having issues, so I came over here real quick. Just to put in a quick word. I was only gonna use the one minute that I that she had left.
Go ahead Jeff, we'll jump you to the top, go ahead.
Um, so thank you for this time and I, first of all, I did want to just get it out there that I do appreciate everybody that stepped forward and applied. It's a big commitment, so hopefully everybody understands what they're getting themselves into or what they're applying for. With that said, I'd like to voice my personal support for Brian McCarthy. I don't know Brian McCarthy at all. I've never had a conversation with him. But have been talking to other people that know him and trust him. And the few Zoom meetings that I have taken part of, he seems very well-prepared at all times. So I trust that he's somebody that's willing to put in the necessary time and energy to understand and study the issues. You know me, I'm not down with the identity politics, so I could care less if he's black or white or brown or purple or yellow or green. I don't care if he's gay or straight. None of that matters to me. I think he will serve best the citizens of this city. And I, what I really especially like about Brian is I think that he can, has the opportunity to act as a unifier within some of the division that we're currently experiencing within the city. So and it sounds like a lot of people here support Brian. And a lot of the people, I'm gonna say a lot of us that are supporting Brian, may not agree on issues. We're not all going to agree on issues. Some of us are polar, on polar opposite sides of the of the of the issues. And it sounds like Brian has support from everybody and I think that's something very important, something that we can't overlook. So that's it. Thank you for that and you guys have a good evening.
Thank you very much Jeff. We'll move on to Monterey Bay moves.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Plons. Sorry, this is my, the business Zoom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember. I'm a Marina business owner and Chamber of Commerce Director of Marina just for over two years now. And I've met Brian McCarthy at a few community events. I fully support Brian's candidacy to fill in Adam Urtia's seat on the city council, not only because he's qualified, passionate and thorough whenever he's involved in a project. But his presentation shows just how much he's aware of all the issues that Marina has dealt with in the past and is still dealing with in the present. His military career and family represents our history here. And apart from being easy to work with and empathetic to people of all walks of life, I I want him to serve on our city council because he openly disagrees with people in a respectful manner. He listens to them and wants to hear their points and their ideas. He's disagreed with me at times and doesn't follow any proverbial party lines. He is on no one's side. He really has the good of our city in mind and I trust him to diligently do his homework whenever a question is raised at a council meeting, weigh the pros and cons and then vote with the public's interests in mind first. Thank you.
Thank you Elizabeth and for joining us. And thanks to everybody. It's obvious that people are being very guarded with their time and saying what they need to say as brief a time as they can. And that's much appreciated. It's great. So we'll go now to
We'll go now to Philan Lo.
Hello, my name's Philan Lo. I'm a resident of Marina for about twenty years. Thank you, council members, for this meeting and listening to my input here. I support Brian McCarthy for the position of Marina City Council. One, Brian has experience in the federal and the local governments in Seaside as well as here in Marina, as well as he's a resident of Marina. He has experience in computer security area, which as the world becomes more computer security concerned and more computerized, it becomes more critical of how to deal with these computer systems, from whether it's websites to the office, to interacting with people for some sort of faster input. I've seen Brian around in the community and he's familiar with the LGBTQ groups, which I think is fantastic that he's out and about and dealing with the various issues around the fires and so forth. I think he's really concerned for the safety of the citizens of Marina and the families in Marina. And also on top of that, Brian supports the environment since Marina is butted up right against the coast of one of our protected areas, the ocean, that he's concerned about the environment and having a clean coast, which is part of Marina's heritage. So I recommend that you please select Brian McCarthy for Marina City Council. Thanks.
Thank you very much for joining us.
For joining us, Philan.
And we go to eight-three-one-six-zero-one-five-five-five-three telephone number. So go ahead and unmute yourself. Six-zero-one-five-five, there you go, hello.
Hi there. Good evening, council members. I am calling in support of Brian McCarthy. And I'm not a particularly political person, but I just wanted to state what I've noticed. And I've seen him there whenever somebody's in need. And I think that's a really important thing to be a team player and and support your community in these really tough times. I was really impressed with what I've seen. He has an open communication skill. And I think that's super important. We need to have someone who's open-minded. And I also think someone that's in a younger generation than myself. I'm in my fifties. But I, my daughters tell me every day, you know, new things going on. So I think we really need that. In the city of Marina, and not just Marina, but Monterey County. And I I truly think he's gonna be an asset. And I hope you all consider him as maybe becoming one of your team players. And I'm just gonna keep it short, sweet and simple. And thank you for your time.
Can we ask you your name?
My name is Cheryl Lynn. Cheryl Lynn Markison.
Thank you very much, Cheryl Lynn. All right, we'll go next to Lisbeth Vischer. Go ahead, Lisbeth.
Good evening, Mayor Delgado and City Council members. I am Lisbeth Vischer, resident of Marina. It is unfortunate that Councilmember Adam Yurutia needed to resign due to his move out of Marina. But it's so good to see that several residents have sent in their applications. And I'd like to thank all of them for the applications and tonight's presentations. I was very happy to see the application of Brian McCarthy because I think that he will be the perfect person to fill this vacancy. In the three and a half years since moving here, I have seen and heard Brian at almost every city council meeting making very thoughtful comments. He researches issues and will tell or show us the sources of the information that he shares with city council, staff and members of the public. One recent example is the traffic survey and the proposed speed limit increases. Thanks to Brian's research, city council decided to request the traffic engineer to adjust his recommendations where legally possible. As a result, several speed limit increases in the city have been avoided. One of those was for Third Avenue at the Doones, very close to my home. My neighbors and I are grateful that the speed limit in that residential street has not been raised to thirty miles per hour. And we are not the only residents that are grateful because Brian's efforts affected streets all over Marina. Brian regularly reaches out to residents, either as a planning commissioner or as just a fellow resident. The current vacancy is for an at-large city council member. And the fact that he lives in the same district as former councilmember Yurutia is a big bonus. It offers the chance for him to run in the two thousand twenty-two election so that he, if elected, can serve the district longer than just the two years that are remaining in Adam Yurutia's four-year term. For the last three years, Brian and I have worked together as Citizens for Just Water volunteers. Just like he has done for city council issues, he has researched many water politics issues. He has attended meetings of many different organizations, have given public comments, and he has spoken with elected officials and other decision-makers outside of meetings. And he has spoken with many residents while volunteering at our booth at the farmer's market, all with the goal to protect Marina's water and coast. I have learned that Brian is an independent thinker who is not afraid to state his opinion and that he always acts respectfully while trying to find resolutions. And we've all been able to see several of those interactions in the movie that Brian has made for tonight's presentation. This is one more proof that he prepares everything very well. And it shows how very energetic, enthusiastic, passionate and well-prepared he is to serve as city council member. If this were an election, I would vote for Brian for city council. And I hope that you will do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Lisbeth. We'll go next to Margaret Davis. Good evening, Margaret.
Good evening. Marina is fortunate to have five, four fine candidates. As a nineteen-year resident and a former planning commissioner, I urge you to appoint David Burnett. David has served seventeen years on the Planning Commission, many of them as chairman. In my time on the dais, I found him an excellent resource for us all with an invaluable historical memory and solid grasp of Marina issues. He was always well-prepared to discuss items on the agenda and fair, judicious and nuanced in his conclusions. David is independent, unsuayed by special interests and uncompromising in protecting the interests of Marina. His leading of the Planning Commission to a unanimous decision against Cal-Am is but one example. Yet he is also willing to be true to his own judgment and conscience, even if he's the only voice for a position. David was among the founding members of Citizens for Just Water in two thousand sixteen and used his technical know-how to create the first Just Water website. He's quiet and thoughtful and humble. He doesn't beat his own drum, but he has made a significant difference in Marina for many years. David is well-familiar with city strengths, weaknesses and opportunities and works collaboratively with colleagues and staff. He will bring reliable intelligence and a solid work ethic to council. Finally, in making your choice, please consider that it is preferable to select a non-resident of the district. This precaution of appointing a non-resident will avoid politicizing the decision and leave a clear field for all candidates in two thousand twenty-two. If the council appoints someone from the district, in effect, this current council is putting its thumb on the scale by creating an incumbent. Moreover, while partisans may insist that the appointee be a resident, in reality, there is no guarantee that a given candidate will be eligible to run after redistricting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Margaret. And we move to Kathy Biala. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor Delgado and council members. I want to give a special thanks and sincere one to all the candidates as I see this appointment process as kind of a mini campaign. And I know how difficult campaigning is on a different scale, of course. I would like the council to approve Brian McCarthy to fill the open position vacated by councilmember Adam Urtia. I have been very impressed by Brian in his role as a fellow planning commissioner. Brian always thoroughly reviews the staff packet and frequently does additional research, as many people have already pointed out. He's always in pursuit of knowledge to make fair and objective decisions. I have also respected his tenacity in being true to his values, even in the face of losing a commission vote. I have seen him not take a no vote at the Planning Commission and continue to address his concerns at the city council level. I have disagreed with him on motions and in some cases was glad his position prevailed in retrospect. Brian is always so well-considered and his logic impeccable and his respect for everyone, their opinions is so genuine. What more can we ask of a potential city council member? His independent thought and essential impartiality has earned him my respect and vote of confidence. And from Brian's video tonight, all of us can see how dedicated he is and has been to Marina by the many, many different civic groups and initiatives he's participated in. I believe that selfless community involvement demonstrates one's true passion for Marina's welfare and future and qualifies a person to represent the people of Marina. Brian is that person. I would also emphasize that Brian resides in the District One and would have the option of running for a full council seat from that district in two years if he chose to do so. Others who are wanting to be appointed to this seat, no matter how competently they might serve for two years, they can never run for the district representation later. This tells us that there is something that we are ignoring in terms of the districting maps that have been implemented this year. And we now somehow disregarding this in this appointment process. Please think about how this decision tonight impacts the future voters of District One. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you very much Kathy. And we move to Nick Kite. Good evening, Nick. Nick, you still show as muted, so we don't hear you yet. Okay, we'll come back to Nick. And right now we'll go to Karen Hassan. Good evening, Karen. Karen, you show as muted. Okay, let's go back to Nick. Nick, you show as ready to go. We'll go to Karen after Nick.
Can you hear me, Bruce?
Yes, good evening, Nick.
Hello, hi everybody. My name is Nick Kite. I'm a resident of Marina. I have been here on and off since I was born on Ford Door in nineteen eighty-seven. I am here to voice my support for Brian McCarthy. He is extremely well-spoken. I don't want to just repeat what everybody else has been saying already, so I'll make it short. Just, I just fully support Brian. I have a good feeling about Brian. He's always been extremely approachable. I can feel like I can ask him any question about the city, even if it wasn't his responsibility to answer it and he would give me some type of an answer. I just fully stand behind him. I think he's a smart choice and I'll continue to support him after this.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, Karen Hassan, did you still want to speak? If not, we'll move on to Rob Wiskerch. Okay, let's go to Rob now and give Karen and everybody else who hasn't spoken yet a chance later on to raise their hand to speak. Go ahead, Rob, and thanks for joining us.
Hi, my name is Rob Wiskerch and I'm a nineteen-year resident of Marina and a resident of District One. And I want the city council to consider who is the right candidate right now. Not who is generally qualified, but who does Marina need right now? And I think that person is Brian McCarthy. Brian McCarthy is, served on the Planning Commission, has made wide decisions on behalf of the city. Brian McCarthy has served on the Planning Commission, has made wide decisions on behalf of the city, put his vote behind initiatives that the city needs right now. He's very well-informed about the water issues that are, of course, looming very large in our backyard. He's very thorough in trying to find out about the issues across different segments of the Marina population. So it's not just adults, it's not just families, it's not just people of color, it's all segments of the community. When Brian is interested in public safety, he goes on ride-alongs, not one ride-along, but multiple ride-alongs. And I think if the City Council is thinking about who can they work with to represent the broad segment of people in Marina and the people in District One, it needs to be Brian McCarthy. So as you're deliberating across the qualifications of all four candidates, who are very generous with their time to come forward, I ask you to think back again about who does the city of Marina need right now on the City Council, and that person would be Brian McCarthy. So I'm hoping that you will move forward and cast the smart vote in appointing Brian McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rob, and we'll go to Elizabeth next. Go ahead, Elizabeth, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. You know, I lived in the city for almost sixty years now, and I know Brian McCarthy. I must say, if I could vote for him, I would vote for him, but I can't, I'm not in his district. But every time that I have gone with the rest of the group for Cal-Am to fight against our water, he was there. Every time I looked at a city council meeting, Brian was there. And I hope that we need somebody young there with new ideas, you know, for the city. We have young kids that are growing up, and we need somebody more closer to their age than my age or your age, you know. So I'm hoping, really, really hoping that you all will sit down and really think this over and elect Brian to the council. I think he would be an asset, not just for District One, but for the whole city. And he will look at everything, not just from left or right, but also down the middle. And he represents all of us. I don't care what color creed you are, and he's there. So I'm going to make a chart. Thank you for taking me and listening to me, and I really, really hope from the bottom of my heart that you guys will select Brian McCarthy. Thank you so much for your time, and you have a nice evening. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We'll go to Greg Fury next, and you may be the last speaker, Greg, but maybe it'll be others that want to speak after you.
First of all, I wanted to congratulate Elizabeth. I love the fact that she's been living here for so long and is still involved and cares. It's wonderful to hear her anytime she speaks. I also wanted to congratulate Brandon for his presentation. It was, to be honest with you, it was one of the best presentations I've seen since I have been living here and monitoring council. It showed a great deal of preparation and conscience. I did, it's interesting, I was contacted by Brian to find out if I was interested in the council seat. I didn't particularly appreciate that. I understand he is very, very determined to capture the seat, and I appreciate that zeal. I think it is a matter of style to me. I think Brandon, for the candidates I've seen and know about, Brandon and David Burnett are, for me, the most qualified and be the best fit for council. And I kind of liken this, it reminded me of going back in grammar school when we picked teams for kickball. And there was a captain on each side, or there was a captain, or any game where there were two sides involved, I should say, maybe not kickball. And somebody was appointed to choose the teams, and they had to pick their team based on a sense of style and based on what their philosophy about playing the game was. And I'm a sports fan, some of you may be, I don't know, but I'll use baseball and basketball as an example. I listened to an interview by Willie Mays the other night. I caddied for Willie Mays when I was a teenager. He was a hero of mine when I was a kid. He was an incredible ball player, had every talent you could imagine, maybe one of the best ball players in baseball history. He was also a very flashy player, and he did that deliberately, and he was very aware of who he was. And he was an incredible athlete and incredible producer, and intuitive and smart. One of my heroes, and Willie Mays said he was the best baseball player, he said, was Roberto Clemente. Roberto Clemente was a Latin ballplayer who was so competent, you almost didn't notice him. He was an incredible fielder. He was a very smart batter, much like Mays, but he was a very different style. He was quiet, he was smooth, he had maybe the best arm I've ever seen in the outfield, but you never really heard about it much. Willie was always in the center of attention with the media. He had that great smile. He was ebullient. Roberto spoke essentially somewhat limited English, but he was amazing. He was like a deer running. And it was just an absolute joy to watch him play. Jamal Willis is another player that comes to mind in basketball, silk. Forty-five percent field goal percentage from the time he stepped on the court till he retired. That's my metaphor for David Burnett. For seventeen years, he's very quietly contributed to the city Marina with a great deal of wisdom, a great deal of independence, and a great deal of balance. Either candidate would make a terrific council member. On the one hand, I think you have a Corvette. On the other hand, you have a Prius. Both are going to get to the same point with different approaches. The issue about the district, that could all be thrown out the window. To me, that's totally irrelevant. What's District One now may not be District One in two years. There may not be districts. I would urge you to look at both candidates carefully. I do support David. There are a lot of personal reasons. After we were in an accident, David was one of those guys that called up and continued to call up. Other people called up and never called back again. I didn't even know David very well, but he is a loyal, caring person. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg, and we'll move to Jan Schreiner. Good evening, Jan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to speak on behalf of David Burnett. I think he would be an excellent choice because I have watched him for years. I recall back in 2004 or 2005, when the city was faced with decisions about Marina Heights and what was then called the University Villages. He was always looking at the approach for solutions, listening to people very carefully who wanted to make the developments more walkable, more commercial availability inside those sprawl developments. And yet, he was under a lot of pressure. I remember one meeting, the former planning commissioner literally standing behind Commissioner Burnett yelling that he needed that yes vote. So I really appreciated way back then that Commissioner, or now Chairman Burnett, was so calm, and he stayed so focused on getting to the yes, but holding ground for trying to get some better characteristics of the development for our community. And that was a very hard fight back then. I know even now, some of the residents are saying that they wish they had some of the features that we were trying to get, but it was a very difficult time then. And I just wanted to say, I watched his leadership, it's very consistent, he's very patient, and he thinks things through very, very carefully, but always looking for the solutions that will work for everyone. I believe David Burnett would be the best choice for the most people for the next two years. And I have mixed feelings on the districting. I agree with the earlier speaker of saying by not appointing someone from the current District One would give a more fair playing field in 2022 for that district. But I'm also hearing from some of the speakers that it's possible districting will even go away. So it's hard. I don't have my crystal ball polished up to be able to say exactly what the council will do in two years. But I think right now, the decision before you tonight, it would be best to go with someone who has a very measured approach and a very long history with Marina and some of the issues that Marina has faced, as well as continues to face in some regards, like the affordable housing piece. So thank you for your time tonight. I know it's a lot to listen to, everyone. I know from my Facebook habit, I've seen the sponsored ads for Brian McCarthy again and again and again, and I see that he knows how to run a social media campaign. So I hope if he doesn't get chosen tonight, that we'll see him again in 2022 as a true candidate chosen by the people. So we'll see. Tonight, I hope you'll go with David Burnett for the experience and the leadership Marina needs. Thank you so much for your time and all your work. I know it's not an easy job.
Thank you very much, Jan, and we'll next go to Hayes Campbell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and candidates. My name is Hayes Campbell. Some of you might know me as Brian McCarthy's husband. We do live in District One of Marina. I'm not typically inclined to speaking at public events like this, but I wanted to come out and support my husband for all his commitment to the city throughout the years. I think he would be the best applicant for District One seat. I've been in the military since 2000, so I don't understand a lot of the civilian side of life sometimes. But as I've been by Brian's side for twelve years, I get to see the hard work that he and many of you do each week for our community, and it's truly humbling. I didn't realize that people outside of the military can be just as dedicated to serving their communities as soldiers do. It's just different, and it's still a lot of hard work. Sometimes I wonder where he gets the energy, because I know the last thing I want to do at the end of a long day or a bad week is spend, you know, extra time in meetings or volunteering during the weekends. So I think it's really nice to see that, you know, he's very participative in the community like that. If there's anything I've learned this year, and this year in particular, about our wonderful American experiment, is that it's those who participate and represent our government who can shape our future. So I'm proud that he's fighting for our beautiful town. Brian spent his life serving his communities, engaged in social activism and helping others. As an LGBTQ plus couple, we don't fit in the norm when it comes to being in the military, but he's not shy about getting involved, even when it conventionally be awkward or uncomfortable. Back in 2013, he volunteered for the family readiness group in my military unit. And the family readiness group helps connect the family members with the military unit and lifestyle. And they help the families when the soldiers deployed or away. And to be honest, it's not a very popular program, but he and other volunteers built a great reputation for the program, and we all enjoyed participating. The highlight of the program was when they coordinated a camping trip for the entire unit, including the families, and this was fifty-plus, you know, soldiers and families. So they coordinated the hiking trips, activities for kids, and facilitated meals. It was a wonderful success, and I can say for my entire career, I've never seen that. So we were really proud of having him aboard the family readiness group. Although we do live in Marina, I'm actually currently at a military exercise at Fort Irwin, which is on the edge of the Mojave Desert. Fort Irwin's home to the 11th Armored Cavalry Division, which I learned was previously part of the 7th Infantry Division based out of Fort Ord. I met several retired soldiers who have reminisced about their days at Fort Ord, and they've already told me that they're coming for a visit, so sorry, Brian. Fort Ord was a special place to many people, and Brian's desire to preserve the military history on the peninsula is something that many of us in the community support. So thank you for listening to my perspective. I know that many of you see what I see in Brian, and I hope you support his appointment for District One seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hayes. Now, we're going to go to Elizabeth next, unless Elizabeth, you're the same. Elizabeth, that's already spoken. And if you're the same, Elizabeth, go ahead, Elizabeth.
I am. I spoke already. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Good night. Okay, let's go to Paula Palau. Good evening, Paula.
Good evening. I sent in a fairly lengthy letter.
Paula, I can barely hear you. I don't know about others.
Can you hear me better now?
Just a little bit. Just let you know.
Okay, well, I'm as close as I can get to my laptop screen without actually kissing it, so. That's about as much as I can do. So what I said was, I had sent in a rather lengthy letter. On behalf of David Burnett, I talked with Brian the other day. I have, in the past, appreciated Brian a great deal. And, you know, I do believe he has incredible assets to bring to the table. And I will say that I am a little disappointed in some of the comments that seem to be attempting to draw a line that one person is energetic and involved and the other person is not. So I want to speak to that just a little bit. And first off, many people probably don't know all of the things that David Burnett has been engaged in. As Greg Fury pointed out, you know, he woke up in intensive care in an emergency room, or I'm sorry, in intensive care in a hospital after a traumatic accident, and who was there? David Burnett, who hardly even knew him, but it was his caring and empathy. They both share many of the same qualities. They are both very engaged. They are both very empathetic. They are both very thoughtful. They both move quietly. What I said in my letter, I still believe, is the more important for the next two years. It is that the staff, who is, you know, we're still skinny on resources, the staff, he has an established relationship with him, and I witnessed this for over a quarter of a century at the County of Santa Cruz, his ability to move into departments and work with elected officials and staff in the most respectful of ways. And his analytical abilities were superior to any of the other analysts at the county, and people always welcomed him into their departments. So a couple of other things, and hopefully the council asked some more pointed questions of David about what it is he's done. I want to point out that he has been the vice chair of the Ingram Housing Fund, which gave, you know, the $1.3 million and worked together to get Juncie Oaks built. He also helped fund Salvation Army, a rental assistance program of $100,000. And he's been instrumental in the developments, the housing elements, he's worked with Ambag. He has been engaged with, one of the co-founders of the founding members, that is, of Citizens for Just Water. He's been very engaged in that, and it's oftentimes I hear that people don't see something, so they assume that something hasn't happened, and that's just not the case. But I very quickly want to address some things that I heard that I thought were fairly negative, which I thought we weren't going to engage in. And first off, was some inference that prior elections are predictors of whether or not someone should be on the council. And there, as you know, you've lost elections before, so that has very little to do with it. Because we're going to be required to do, after the census, redistricting, there's also no guarantee of where anyone will fall in that. So that, to me, seems like it's a non-issue. But I'm very disappointed to hear this ageism. It's a prejudicial discriminatory thing that I think is really unbecoming and shouldn't even be involved in this discussion. It's about qualifications and who has the best, and that is really what the council has to decide. We're hearing all of us speak for the public, but it's the council who is going to have to make this decision. And so I hope you do that, and you do it wisely, and you ask some very pointed questions to perhaps surface some of the things that were not surfaced during all of the speakers' comments, who may or may not be very familiar with the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paula. We'll go to Dawn Alva next. Hello, Dawn.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I would like to support, or at least give my voice to support Brian McCarthy. There's so many things that were said earlier today in support of Brian. There's one that I didn't hear. So I want to say ditto to all of the comments made, but the one that really strikes me is that I'm in Marina, I live here, I'm a community member, I'm a business owner, and I seem to always be in Marina. And I run into Brian repeatedly at different locations, at different meetings. And for me, his connection to our community and understanding the voice of the different people, he listens, he's there, he's present. And for me, his connection to our community and understanding the voice of the different people, he listens, he's there, he's present. That, to me, is one of the biggest indicators of a person that's willing to give their passion and their perspective to the dais. So, again, I want to echo all of the comments made previous about Brian. I echo, I ditto those. But the one that I didn't hear was about him being present. And I find that extremely comforting to know that he is talking to our community in different capacities, not just the politicos, not just at different meetings where there is power, but within the grocery store, walking down to the post office. I see Brian everywhere, and I think that's very important to represent our community and the multiple voices within. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dawn. And we'll put the call out, sort of a last call for any other speakers that haven't yet spoken. This would be the time to raise your hand. Elizabeth, you keep raising your hand, but I'm not going to call on you. Okay, we're gonna go to Jacqueline C. Whoops. We're gonna, does anyone else wish to speak tonight? Jacqueline C. Simon, let's go to you next. Whoops, where'd you go? You're raising your hand and lowering your hand. But Jacqueline, I'm gonna assume that you want to speak, because your hand keeps going up, and I'm going to try to find you. There you are. Okay, we'll go to Jacqueline, and then Tom Moore. Hello, Jacqueline.
Hello, Bruce. How are you this evening?
Good. Good to hear your voice.
Awesome. So, you know, I've been listening to everyone tonight, and I've enjoyed listening to the wonderful comments that I've heard in regards to Brian McCarthy. I think Brian has a wonderful future in politics in the future. But I want to speak to the importance, in my opinion, of leadership, experienced leadership, and solid inclusion and diversity. When I look at your board, your council, I have often said, it would be good if you had more diversity. Both Brian and David bring that. I am an elected. I've had 14 years in Monterey County as an elected, won my fourth four-year term two years ago. My brother and his wife have lived in the city of Marina, this beautiful, wonderful city, you know, by the bay for over 40 years. I have spent much time in the community, working, supporting efforts here on many different levels. And I'm thinking about your community and what it really, truly needs right here, right now, today, in light of what's happening in our society, in our community, and even as far as our federal government. I'm an African-American woman. I am a professional. I'm a professor. I'm a business owner. I'm a business coach, and I'm a person that knows both David's work in the community. He's worked so very hard and tirelessly in that housing fund program. That is something that was really needed. He was one of the champions. I'm affiliated with the American Legion and have been on the board and such, and very, very well aware of what happens in the Salvation Army and various programs throughout the state. David has been supportive of it. We need to look at what we can do today so that we can have a better tomorrow. I see David Burnett as being the best candidate for today because of the inclusion and diversity issues that our society and our community is dealing with today, full stop. If David wasn't qualified, I would not be advocating for that. I'm not simply advocating for that because he happens to be African-American. But I'm advocating it because he happens to be a very qualified person that cares about this community, that I believe can add to your council and enhance it in areas of which I believe you could use some enhancing. Enclosure. Brian, I really feel that you rock. You are a person of this community. You bring a awesome, wonderful millennial level of energy and such that I believe this community can use and need. Marina could use you. Please stay and continue if you're not selected tonight. However, my solid, full support is due to the level of experience, the level of leadership that I know David Burnett to be a part of and has observed and worked with him for years, years. So, I'd like to go with experience. I'd like to go with leadership, solid leadership right here and right now. But I also still want to see Brian McCarthy in the future, and I commend your service to our country. Brian, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jacqueline. And we'll go to Tom Moore. Hello, Tom.
I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Tom. We can hear you.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much, council. I'm Tom Moore from Marina Coast Water District Board of Directors. However, I'm speaking as an individual tonight. I'm afraid that Jacqueline Simon pretty much, I don't know how she managed it, but I think she saw my notes. So, I won't spend a lot of time repeating what she just said. I do support David Burnett. I do encourage Brian McCarthy, and in fact, fully expect that even if he is not selected tonight, we will see his name on the ballot in 2022. I certainly encourage him to continue his very fine work with the city of Marina in a variety of ways. One of the reasons why I support David, aside from the fact that I've served with him on Planning Commission, is really his humility. I think you will find him easy to work with. As other speakers have said, I think your staff will find him easy to work with. But he will bring an experiential perspective to the job. Being an African-American man, he will bring that to the council if you appoint him. And given what's going on in this country today, I think it's incredibly important that we hear that voice and listen to that voice very carefully. So, thank you very much, and I wish the council the best of luck. It certainly is going to be a very tough decision. You've got four individuals who've taken the time to put themselves forward for this position. And three of them are going to be disappointed tonight. And so, we thank them for their willingness to basically stick their necks out and volunteer their time for this. So, good luck.
Thank you very much, Tom. Thanks for speaking tonight. We'll next go to Christine Burnett. Hello, Christine. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, Christine. We can hear you.
Good evening. Mayor Delgado and the City Council officials. So, good to speak to you tonight. Thank you for hosting this appointment process. It's very encouraging. I have, I am the wife of David Burnett, and we have lived in Marina for 25-plus years. And I have personally seen how David has worked tirelessly on the Planning Commission on a number of issues. He reads and understands documents thoroughly. He absorbs them. He stays up late. He goes to meetings after meetings to make sure his voice and the voice of the citizens of Marina is heard and heard well. He goes the extra miles in developing solutions for issues as they come across the table of the Planning Commission. He fought diligently for citizens of Marina on housing and water and other projects. As far as the young man referring to, he hasn't seen him in Black Lives Matter. He has been there. Unfortunately, it's really unfortunate that he hasn't seen him, but he has been there and in so many other areas. He looks, he really looks deeply into why things happen. He understands it. And he speaks to people in a very calm and respectful way. He treats people with dignity, integrity, and respect. And because of that, he realized that the staff at the Marina Planning staff were overworked, and he heard them. He empathized with them. And that kind of empathy, I think, too, goes along with understanding the policies and rules and regulations that the council needs. I wholeheartedly hope that you will select David Burnett as the next candidate to fill the vacant position, because he has that history of Marina. He understands what the city needs, and he has so many ideas that could be used in so many different ways. So, council members, please, look at David Burnett as the next person to fill the vacancy that's there. And as far as Brian, yeah, in the future, yes, we need millennials. My daughters are millennials, and they're very, very active in Los Angeles now. But for now, here in Marina, David Burnett is the choice that's needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine, for joining us tonight. And we'll go to Herbert Cortez. Hello, Herbert.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Delgado.
Okay, Herbert, let's start over with Herbert's four minutes, please.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Delgado and members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I first want to start by thanking all the candidates for submitting their names to this important service to the city and sacrifice that whoever is elected will undertake. So, thank you very much to all the candidates. Tonight, my support will be for the City Council to consider David Burnett. But I do want to echo all the comments shared for Brian McCarthy. I think he's been someone who has walked the walk, and I look forward to continuing to follow him, read about his comments, listen to him, because I think he's still, he is a true leader in the city of Marina. So, thank you so much, Brian, for everything you've done for us and continue to do. But tonight, I do want to support David Burnett. And the reason why I want to support David Burnett, because I think that David Burnett does have the understanding that one needs about a city, and that comes with time. And the story that I want to share with the public is years ago, when the Marina Coast Water District was going through a transition period, it was David Burnett who tapped me on the shoulder and a few others to consider that position. And that was important, because he saw something in me that, you know, I may not have seen in myself. I was here already living 10 years, participating with my family. And they knew that something had to be, I guess, woken up in the Marina Coast Water District. And so, I appreciate his mentorship, his guidance through that process. And today, you know, I speak for myself, but I'm in that position now, and I continue serving all the city and all the constituents in Marina Coast Water District. But that's the story I want to share, because those are the stories that you may not see on Nextdoor. Those are the stories that you may not see on Instagram, is that quiet phone call where someone's saying, hey, you know, you gotta believe in yourself. We might need your assistance. Come. I mean, take some time. Let's talk about it. Do you have any questions? Those are the things that we need right now in the city. And Brian, I think you're there for a lot of people based on the comments today, and I value that. But for tonight, for the City Council and their support, I do want to share my support for David Burnett, and I want to thank him deeply for seeing something in me that was always there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Herbert, and thanks for your service, along with others who have spoken tonight from the Marina Coast Water District. Okay, so, we'll go ahead and close public comments and talk about the questions that came up. And there weren't too many questions, so I'll ask council in a minute if I've missed any, but Danielle wanted to know from the four candidates, she said she had no preference on who to select, but she wanted to know their thoughts on the priorities of diversity issues that have been brought up to council in the last few months. And so, we're gonna do a revolving ask, you know, order. So, I'll ask Matt to help me track this. But for the revolving to start, let's go alphabetical. So, David Burnett will be the first to respond to this question, and then the next alphabetical person in the list would start the next one. But we'll try to work this out, to be fair. So, go ahead, David, if you want me to repeat that question, or you want to launch into your response.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank the council and all of the citizens in Marina for your long attention this evening. Diversity is a very multifaceted, multi-layered object to unpack. And I think for us, the main thing to remember is that in our time, this time now of COVID, the one population that is almost completely defenseless are those without shelter, those without a home, those who are requiring additional mental health support, and those who are newly trying to integrate into our community. I think as we broaden the composition of our council, we will have different perspectives that know, in their own personal history, how difficult it is to gain access, to gain even acknowledgement that, hey, I'm here, I'm suffering. I can remember many, many years ago, a, for lack of a better term, stupid doctor once said that, well, you know, black people don't feel pain the same way, so we never give them the same meds that we give, you know, white people. It's that kind of stunted growth that contributes, I think, to our society's woes and the challenges that minorities face. So, and certainly back to the question, I think what I would do on council as we review budget items and look at items that are being presented to us, deeply consider the impacts that are having on our communities, and go out and reach out to people of our community. You know, one good thing about Marina, and one of the reasons why I moved here, is the fact that it is so ethnically diverse.
All right. Thank you, David. And for Peter Lee, I wanted to repeat the question. What are your thoughts on the priorities of diversity issues that have been brought up to council the last few months? Go ahead, Peter. Peter, you're muted.
For me, the priorities for the City Council is maintain the current level of service. You know, I expect that the city will not receive the revenue of funding like the previous years. So, the City Council need to look at the option and may have to reduce some level of service or have to somehow find a new revenue sources and new funding. So, that's the top priority for the council, and then look at Plan B, Plan B to work on if we in a best shape in financial terms. But for the diversity issue, you know, if you go back five years, 10 years, or go back 45 years, we kept saying that Marina is the seventh, you know, most diverse in the nation. But on the City Council, we never have more than 50% of the council member. So, and I heard tonight, and nobody mentioned that, and you talk to the, you kept using the diversity on the issue, on the funding, you know, on environmental justice. But you never appoint the qualifier minority, you know, just have one reason for another. So, I'd like to ask the council seriously, you know, if you take some proper action or not, or you just lip service. And you kept, you know, using that with the KLM and that, but you never can prove that on the council that your minority is well represented. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So, Brian McCarthy, you're next. What are your thoughts on the priorities of diversity issues that have been brought up to council in the last few months?
Thank you for the question, Councilon Dr. Versetti. So, for me, it would start with the question of, does, do diversity issues or problems exist in the city of Marina? And if you answer that in any way other than, you know, resounding no, then I think that you have to make that a priority. And I'm going to tell you that I would answer that as a resounding no, and I would say that because of the comments that we've heard from the public tonight and in previous City Council meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. And then to for Duchan, thoughts on the priorities of diversity issues that have been brought up to council the last few months?
Well, as, you know, as, as, as David, as David has pointed out, it's a very complex issue. And Marina actually so far has done fairly well on, on, on addressing diversity issues. Could we do more? Yes, of course we can. One example is, you know, of doing things good, obviously. One example is the current work on the MLK statue that is going to be placed in Marina, Marina already has. So, you know, we can, we can look at this and, and, and try and, and, and find solutions for, as Brian correctly pointed out, the Marina is so far operating okay. But, you know, we should not assume that those issues will not pop up at some point. Maybe, maybe one of those things that needs to be addressed would be diversity on the City Council. I agree. And, you know, I would fall into that same group that, you know, of a white haired person who would be sitting on, on the City Council. But, you know, those are the issues that we definitely need to look at.
Thank you very much, Duchan. Now, before we go into some other questions, which are not all toward the candidates, but most of them are, I wanted to ask council if you think it'd be okay, because we might have a lot of questions tonight. If we limit it to one minute every response, or would you rather have it unlimited or some other limit? And let's hear from council on that.
One minute is a little short, maybe 90 seconds. Or two minutes?
Yeah, I think up to two minutes is, is good because these are important questions and it's a tough decision. So I really like to hear.
We could have about 40 questions tonight. And if you gave two minutes to each of the four candidates, that could be 40 times four, which would be 160 minutes, which would be another three hours.
I, I understand that, but I just think since we just gave four minutes for each of the public comments, we have a responsibility to hear that and to hear what the candidates have to say and.
I'm okay. I love going late. I just wanted to, just, okay. Thank you, Lisa, Councilmember Berkeley. Councilmember O'Connell?
Two minutes is fine. Thank you.
Two minutes. Okay. So for the questions that are posed in the near short time ahead of us, we will ask the council, the city clerk to give us a two minute timer. But the next question I think is to.
Hey, Bruce?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, though, if you can answer your question in less than two minutes, that's pretty fabulous, too.
And I think everybody's been doing really well tonight, uh, saying what they need to say without paying attention to that. Okay, so Christina asked our legal folks, I think, are we legal in not requiring the chosen candidate tonight to be at, to be in a, in District One? And why is that legal not to require that?
Yes, it, it is legal and it is part of the municipal code that allows that, section 2.02. I haven't said here, in any case, it's part of the municipal code. And the section states vacancies in council member offices elected at large may be filled from the city at large. So it is certainly legal to do so. It is not required that you do so. The, the word may is, is not directory. So yes, it is legal to appoint someone who does not live in District One to replace council member Arusha.
Okay. This next question is a sensitive one. I recognize that. Christina asked about David Burnett's contributions to Gail Morton. But to try to make this more of a general question, is it okay if I ask, and I'll let council decide this, is it okay if I ask all the candidates to disclose if they have given any contributions to council members?
So just to, to address that, Mr. Mayor, just, I was waiting for our turn to disclose what were our ex parte communications and our relationship. So it isn't that, that is not disclosed by me, it's that I was waiting for that point in the meeting when you generally ask us for the opportunity to do that.
And Mr. Mayor, I can make just a short comment on that, that political contributions, donations also to elected officials do not result in a potential conflict, if it's a situation. They're specifically exempted from the Political Reform Act and excluded from the definition of gifts and other income, which would create conflict or a potential conflict of interest. So they're also considered to be a form of political speech.
Okay. So how should we handle this question? Should we just ask all the four candidates, you know, what their contributions, if any, have been to the four elected officials? Is that a fair way to ask this question?
Or should we just disregard the question entirely?
Well, if it's a legal question, I don't think we should disregard it.
Well, it, it does not create a conflict of interest. I mean, the question could be asked, I suppose, but, but the, the conclusion would be the same in all cases.
So I could ask the question just the way it was asked, or I could broaden it to all four candidates. Those are the only two options I see.
For the purpose of time, can't we just move on? The, it's going to be the same response for everyone.
I, I don't know what the answer would be from the four candidates, but let's just ask the question. Candidates, have you donated to any of the four of our campaigns in the past? And we'll start with Peter Lee, to McCarthy, to Tatum Miravich, and then lastly Burnett.
And is it to any one of us, or is it?
It's to the four candidates.
Right. But have, your question was to each of the candidates, have you contributed? What, can, let me ask my question for you for clarification. Thank you. I'm trying to understand, are you asking, have they contributed to your campaign or my campaign historically? Or, okay, I thank you. It's just point of clarification.
So let's go to Peter Lee.
No, I, I don't recall that I contribute anything to the current mayor, the current council members.
Okay, let's go to Brian McCarthy.
I don't believe I, I have not contributed any monetary or any in-kind services to any of the council members.
Thank you. We'll go to Duchan, Tatum Miravich.
I have not, I have not contributed to any, any one of you or the former council members at all.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to David Burnett.
As is my constitutional right, I have made my free speech contribution.
Okay. Thank you, David. The next question is from Christina. Have any of you four candidates run for City Council before and what were the results? And we're going to go to McCarthy first and then Tatum Miravich.
Have never run for City Council. If I had been in a district eligible this time, I would be running for City Council.
Thank you. Duchan?
I never ran for City Council.
Okay, David?
I don't see the relevance of the question. I think it was asked in a mean spirited, but yes, I have run for City Council in the past. And yes.
Thank you, David. Peter Lee?
I ran for one, one time, but I didn't win.
Okay, thank you, Peter. We only have a couple of questions left. David Brown asked if there was any possibility for litigation if there was a non-District One candidate chosen. Legal, if we could get Bob Rathie for that?
Yeah. It's difficult to have a, what attorney answer another attorney's question whether it was ever possible for litigation. But in my opinion, no. In fact, I think if, if, yeah, in my opinion, I'll just say no. I don't, I don't believe this would subject the city to a significant threat of litigation.
Okay. Now, those are the, thank you. Those are the only questions I've written. Did any other council members note any questions asked by the public? Okay, now let's go to council questions. I don't know how to do this, but let's just open it up to council members to ask a question of the four candidates. And the first one to answer it will be Duchan. I'll get it going here. Can you briefly describe your relationships with me and the other three council members as far as friendships, campaign donations, which you've already covered? You can skip that. Political allyship, just to be a transparency about what's been your relation with the four of us elected officials?
So.
Start with Duchan. Go ahead, Duchan.
Yeah. So I, I have, you know, I have known, I have known you, Bruce. I have known Frank as Frank had already disclosed through a completely unrelated, you know, relationship when, when I was his client almost 15 years ago, you know. But aside from that, I, or, you know, I've known Gail and obviously I met Lisa relatively recently. I've known you only as council members. I've met you, I would say 99% of the time I've met you in, on, in public venues during a city council meeting or something like that. I have, I have met you, Bruce, once or twice privately at, you know, on a person, person to person level at the farmer's market. But, you know, and, and obviously I've met Lisa via Zoom as, as, as recently as this, this week. And we had an extensive, you know, conversation about, about my candidacy for this position. Aside from that, you know, we do not, I, I do not have any, any personal relationship with any of the current council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Duchan. David Burnett?
Good evening. Well, Bruce, I worked on your campaign in 2004. We walked the streets together. We also worked on the campaign, I believe, in, in 2008. I have worked also on Frank's campaign, walking the streets of Marina for him. We have tried to have a beer together at one point, but we've never succeeded. And I wonder if Frank's reluctant to pay for that. Maybe that's the holdup. I'm not sure. I've known Lisa Berkeley and worked on her campaign, although there was, she was unopposed. But we have collaborated within various clubs that we belong to. And Gail Morton, I have a very respectful, cordial relationship with Gail. I've worked on her campaigns in the past.
Thank you, David. We'll go to Peter Lee.
So when I, when I ran for the City Council seat, I think I worked with Bruce and Gail. That's a joy. I think that's a joy campaign. And then there are, there are other occasion, I think I worked help out with the campaign of Bruce, Gail and Frank. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peter. And lastly, Brian?
Thank you for the question. I've seen each and every one of you out and about at one point or another. I've never certainly been in any of your homes. Maybe I'm overly naive, but I'd like to think of all of you as, as at least people that I would like to work with on the issues, if, if not friends.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll go to another question from a different council person. Gail, did you have something?
Yeah, yes. So what is your position on affordable housing and what policies do you support or oppose?
And we'll start with David Burnett. Thanks, David.
Well, as I said earlier, affordable housing is a very, very pressing issue in Marina and Monterey County. There've been a number of proposals. There've been some ideas batted around. But I, I for one believe that what's really important in our area, if we don't address this, I, I've heard some estimates that by 2040, the median income required to live on the coast is going to be around $100,000. And so you're going to have folks living out in, you know, central California and driving three or four hours to get to Marina to go to work or something like that. So I've, I've been following closely some of the proposals that are in Sacramento right now. One of the issues that seems to resonate with a lot of folks has to do with somehow transferring or establishing equity so that people are able to buy in at an affordable rate and somehow maintain that. So that houses are designed affordable and they remain affordable in our community. Most of Marina, a lot of Marina is, is working class and work very hard for their money. And so I think we as council need to be respectful of that and work as hard as we can. Grants any kind of programs that are available to build. I know that the current ADU build out is allowing additional dwelling units to be added to properties. We need to put forward proposals and policies that would allow those units to stay affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We'll go next to Peter Lee.
So with regard to the issue of affordable housing, so the first item is what the law requires for the ratio for the development. So that's one we have to stick with, you know, minimum ratio, how many units in that development. That's where we have to be enforced and we cannot accept in lieu fees. So developer pays CD, say $2 million so to the avoid the, you know, the affordable housing unit. So there's a no. But in that, in addition to this, I don't know what the, the city has adopted. The Accessory Dwelling Unit Code or not, if not, we have to adopt the right way and allow people to, to build brand new units, ADU, so to reduce. But look at the bigger issue is the city has to work with other agency, you know, nonprofit, let the Housing Authority and CHISP to somehow work in partnership so can, you know, construct a new affordable units. You know, we can either, you know, somehow reduce the requirement fee or just some, you know, contribution to, to, to their project. So, and that's, and the, in addition to non-profitable, you know, just have to look for available grants, you know, to, to build it. And I think that's one of the top priority, but it's very challenging and difficult. You know, we can talk 2020 and we can talk within, you know, 10 year, 20 year from now. It's very difficult to provide affordable units in Monterey County because the fee is so high, the cost so high.
Okay, Peter, thank you. And I'm sorry to cut you off a little bit there with the two minutes. Okay, let's go to Brian McCarthy.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Pro Tim Morton. So first, I want to say that I know several people that live in substandard living conditions here in Marina, whether that's an unfinished space or a trailer or something of that nature. So we, we all know that that's a very common thing that happens in the city. Look, I've, I've looked at our housing element. I am familiar with our Reno numbers, which are very high. They seem unsurmountable. But the good news is we have a lot of availability of open sites to build upon, to build affordable housing projects. And so we really need to think outside the box. I know it's cliche to say, but I'm going to say the word teeny homes, you know, we need to evaluate the pros and cons of implementing some strategy that, that involves these smaller affordable design homes. And to Mr. Burnett's point, I mean, establishing equity and allowing people to move up and not stay in these affordable housing units for all their life necessarily because we, the city, will help them establish that equity, move into a nicer home, something that's larger than what they currently have. And, and to do it for a good reason. And, you know, and finally, I just want to also echo Mr. Burnett's comments about the ADUs. I think that moves us in the right direction. It's going to be a long road to haul with those ADUs. It's going to be a long road to haul with those ADUs because that's not going to solve that affordable housing crisis overnight. It's going to take a really long time to see a difference being made there. But I think it's a, a step in the right direction and I'm really proud that as a city, we are really embracing that and moving forward with that.
All right, thank you. Brian McCarthy will go next to, and lastly to Duchan Tatovmiravich.
Well, I will, I mean, I have to say that I agree with all the other three candidates actually on a lot of issues that they brought up because those are all valid, valid points. As I, as I've stated before, I think that, you know, that we actually have to, to start thinking fairly radically and way out of the box, way out of the box. Not, you know, not just peek out, you know? We have to stand out of the box in order to make things happen. Because, you know, just like, you know, just like a group of people was capable of, basically, I'll, I'll, I'll use the term sidelining, the, the CalAmp. That's how we need to approach the, the housing issues in Marina. Because we do, we do have absolutely land to develop and we just need to be very creative how we're doing it and to do it in a way that is feasible, to do it a way that is beneficial for the city and obviously beneficial for, for the, for, for the residents that would be, that would be using that. So I agree with Peter Lee's that in lieu, fees should not be given lightly because we've seen over the course of time how they get manipulated. You know, depending on the economic situation, everything else, they might come back and, and bite us. You know, if the economy is good, everything appears to be easier. So we have to always think long-term and anticipate the worst possible situation that can happen so that we do not get surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, another question from any council members? We have Councilmember O'Connell. Frankie must be muted, I don't know.
Thank you. What formal education and or work experience of yours would you consider to be an asset to you as a city council member?
Okay, let's go to, thank you, let's go to Peter Lee first and then Brian McCarthy.
Yes, so I consider my engineer education is helpful, useful at the city council because right now the council doesn't have that portion on the, with the council. And my experience with local, sphere, local and, you know, Monterey County and regional agency will be very helpful to the council. And, you know, and I, I negotiate and work on other elected appointed official with, will provide the, in the area, water, wastewater, which is, the council is lacking. So we'll be helpful to that and, you know, for reveal of the development, traffic on other issue, those issue will be not just for the council, but for, for the public. And the most valuable for me to contribute is my time, you know? I can contribute, you know, 200 hours per month. That's what I did for the water district in 2013, 2014, 2015. I spent time every day, you know, 30 days a month and, you know, several hours to keep up with the issue of the district and the background and the proposal and look at the negotiation. And those probably the, the best contribution I can give to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. And next we'll go to Brian McCarthy.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember O'Connell. You know, look, the, the reality is, is I believe that everything I've done in life up until this point has prepared me for this moment. But specifically in terms of my education, you know, I received my bachelor's degree from George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia, which is incredibly close to our nation's capital. Local governance and governance in general kind of gets into every aspect of life when you live near the nation's capital. So I think that's where my love for democracy kind of really started. After that, I did some postgraduate work here at the Naval Postgraduate School. Again, being here in Monterey, learning IT skills brings a tech background. You've heard me advocate for better technology to be used within cities, data business. But I also think it's really important that we look at that as we prepare our workforce for the jobs that are likely to come to Marina. In terms of work experience, you know, about 10 years ago, I spent two years in, in Iraq. And, and it was a really interesting experiment because there were no roads when I got there. There was no infrastructure and I knew very little about that and that wasn't even my qualification. But yet we were all asked to help out and participate in building this city in the middle of a desert. And so that experience actually brought great experience to, to my ability to be prepared to, to take on the seat of city council member. And, and then finally, just other jobs locally here at DMDC up the road, at different air force bases throughout the state have again prepared that strong information security and tech background that I can bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We'll go to Duchan Tatovmiravich next.
Thanks. So I believe that some of my work as the, as the member of the Recreation and Culture Commission in, in two terms has given me an insight on how the city operates on, on one level. Also, my current position as a Public Affairs Officer, which deals basically with local communities, gives me, gives me another insight into the issues that all different communities in the area have. So that has helped tremendously. Part of that, part of the Recreation and Culture experience was also the, the development of the Plan of Utilization for the Water City Project, which is to be basically, which is, which the city is now working on to, you know, rebuild, if you will, the, the old army pool and to create, to create the new park in that area. In addition to, to this, I would like to say that my, that my background as, as a filmmaker and a journalist has actually given me the opportunity to, to deal with, you know, politicians of different levels, which also is, is a, is a contributing factor when communicating with, with different government agencies and organizations that can be of use to the city of Marina. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Duchan. And David Burnett, you have the last word on this question.
Okay, so I think my most recent experience being Chair of the Planning Commission and reviewing a lot of the large projects and ordinance updates, general plan amendments that eventually go to city council. I think I understand how the city operates. I understand the economics of our area, what are the pressing issues, what things need to be addressed immediately. Also, in 2010, I served as an appointed member of the County of Monterey's Redistricting Committee. And this was a six to eight month effort to redraw the supervisory districts in Monterey County. And there was a large group of us. I was able, because of my background in GIS, help look at the data. And I think this is going to be relevant because one of the things you learn from redistricting, it's all based on population. And it's not just population on a block, it is population within what are called census blocks. And census blocks are combined into larger areas. And these are finite or, or non-reducible products that you use to shape and form districts. And as anyone knows, people move around a lot in Marina. And once the 2020 census is tallied, we're going to have a major, major shift to redistrict. Okay, so we went through the district thing, which I believe, and I stressed this at a number of meetings, we should wait for the 2020 census because we're going to have to do this again. But there were certain political expedients that, that seemed to dictate that we had to do it this year at a great expense and we will have the expense again. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, council, would you like to offer another question to the candidates?
Yes, I have got one.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So I'm going to give a little bit of a couple of sentences before. So Karen Armstrong, the founder of the global movement, the Charter for Compassion, said, "A compassionate city is an uncomfortable city, a city that is uncomfortable when anyone is homeless or hungry, uncomfortable if every child isn't loved and given rich opportunities to grow and thrive, uncomfortable when as a community, we don't treat our neighbors as we wish to be treated." So my question for you all is, if elected, or sorry, if appointed, what uncomfortable issues would you look to address? And how will you engage or motivate the residents of your community to get involved in addressing these issues?
Thank you, Lisa. We're going to go to Brian McCarthy first.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Berkeley. Excellent question, and it is uncomfortable. You know, I am uncomfortable with the state of race relations in the country right now. I talked to a gentleman who you've heard speak earlier, Nate Sawyer, that, you know, is, is leading the, the movement here in Marina. You know, and I was uncomfortable and I, I told him I was uncomfortable. But it's these uncomfortable discussions that I really do think bring us closer together. And there's an element of being comfortable, being uncomfortable, if you will. You know, as a gay man, you know, I, I've been uncomfortable a large portion of my life. So fortunately, maybe for me, it's something that I'm a little bit versed in. But to your point in the question, I mean, anytime you hear about child abuse, when you hear about children going to bed hungry, when you hear about, you know, sexuality issues or, or discrimination issues, that, you know, all of those things make me uncomfortable. But that doesn't mean I don't want to talk about them. I think in many ways, I, I thrive on talking about some of these uncomfortable issues. So thank you again for the question.
All right, thank you, Brian. We'll go to, next to Duchan.
Okay, you, you caught me off guard. I was making notes. But so, yes, that's, that's, that's an excellent question, Lisa. Thank you. I think that, you know, we need to address those questions. Obviously, one of the, one of the issues that the city has is the, the low level of income that a lot of our citizens or, you know, especially families have. And that is very visible as, when, when you, when we look at how many student lunches are taken through the, through the, through the city-funded programs. And from, if I, if I remember correctly, just recently, I heard the, the data that almost 400 breakfasts are being served every day by, 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 by the, in, in the city-run program. So, you know, we need, we need to address those questions. We need to address the questions of, of homelessness in the area. Because that is a major, that is a major issue in the area. And that is a problem that Marina is affected very much with. You, you remember that about a year ago, we had a, a, a large encampment in the northern, or the northern access roads to Marina, for instance. You know, we still have those issues as, as Brian has pointed out in his video. So all of these, all of these things have to be attacked and we have to attack them fairly simultaneously. The best way to do it would be a personal and direct engagement. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Duchan. And next we'll go to David.
Thank you, Councilman Berkeley, for your question. I think it's an excellent question. My lifelong philosophy has always taught me that the best place to start when looking for change is to look at oneself. I think you have to do a deep reflection on your attitudes and your own actions and make a serious effort to align them with what your personal beliefs are. I think for many of us, we have goals and ideals, but what comes out of our mouth or where we put our money or what we put energy into is, is destructive sometimes. I think one thing that is an uncomfortable question right now is the city council and the city of Marina. I think the level of respect has all but disappeared in many, many, many areas. And what I would like to bring to this is a, you know, maybe a retreat or maybe some airing of past grievances. And let's, let's come together and construct a beautiful Marina. We have a lot of experience, we have a lot of depth of knowledge. We can use these in many, many, many ways. Uncomfortable questions, I think are also opportunities. And we can, you know, say, oh, 2020 is bad, I'll be glad when it's over, or we can look at it for what it is. It's been an awakening. It's been an opportunity for us to challenge what we felt in the past as reasonable or sane or common sense and reexamine those things and make new choices. I think for all of us, our most uncomfortable question is, are we dissatisfied with yesterday's self? That is to say, who we were yesterday, are we happy with that or are we going to make a change? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my turn. So the first uncomfortable issue that we can see is homelessness. But from my point of view, the other two hidden uncomfortable issue is the hunger and property, you know, poverty. I, I, you know, I don't think Marina can even solve this issue by ourselves. It has to be a regional issue and have to be solved by a regional solution. I know that they are already set up, you know, coordination within agency to address some of the issue here. So we, we, we have to be a partner of other partner, like county social services, non, nonprofit organizations, school, foundation, police and the court system. And I want to mention one, you know, tragedy in Marina. And I don't think a lot of people know that one time there's a teenager who hung, commits suicide in Marina. And he left a note, he said that the reason he committed suicide because his family doesn't have enough money to buy food. So after that accident, you know, a lot of money coming in from federal and building hundreds and hundreds of homes. So I don't think we need to wait for that tragedy to stop. I think we just continue with the model coordination we have and just improve it. And it's one of the very challenging, you know, problem. It takes a long time to solve it. Thank you.
We're ready for the next question. Thank you, Peter.
Mr. Mayor, are you going to ask one or?
Sure, I'll ask one. We, we've talked about residential housing, affordable housing. And the flip side of that is jobs and the jobs housing ratio, how many jobs per home is important. Marina's job housing ratio is much lower than thought to be healthy for a city's economy and a city's. for a city's economy and its quality of life. So it's kind of the flip side question to what can we do about affordable housing. I want to ask the candidates, what do you think we can do to improve the numbers of jobs we have in Marina compared to the number of homes? That is, increase the job housing ratio. And we're going to go to Duchan first.
So that is an absolutely essential part of the conversation, Bruce. We need to make sure that the city actually supports as much as possible the creation of small businesses. Now, the thing is, when I say that, I know that city does provide a lot of support. For instance, during the pandemic, the city has actually sent out financial support to businesses monthly and stuff like that. So I understand that. However, we have to find a way to achieve two things. We have to find a way to motivate the property owners who own vacant business space to actually rent it at below market rate for a while so that, one, they do get the tenants, their properties get used, and small businesses can actually afford to get in there and grow. So that might be one way of doing it. The other way would be to look at our zoning regulation and to try and figure out if we can somehow modify the zoning so that we make Marina much more of a walkable area so that we can open up small businesses not only along the major thoroughfares, but within, you know, within other parts of the community as well. That would also help. A lot of mom-and-pop stores actually operate that way. They live, you know, and operate from a garage or something like that. So those are the things, those are the out-of-the-box ideas that we should probably look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Duchan. Let's go to David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that question. I'm going to, as you flipped it from affordable housing, I'm going to flip it back again. One of the comments I heard at a recent planning conference in Los Angeles was that this idea of a jobs housing ratio was kind of archaic and a holdover from old understandings. And I thought about this when I was commuting between Marina and Santa Cruz. The one thing that used to puzzle me was there were as many cars coming from Santa Cruz to Marina as there were cars driving to Santa Cruz. And I said, gee, why can't those people that live in Santa Cruz live in Marina? And why can't, you know, you have this question. And so you begin to understand that it's pretty complicated because it gets down to questions of class. It gets down to how we value work in this community. This is an age-old problem. You know, the average wage today hasn't significantly changed in 40 years, you know? And I think this is one issue, and it's beyond the purview of the city council. But I think what Duchan mentioned was relevant. You know, we need to incentivize small businesses, people that can live in our community, have a business in our community, you know, and provide employment to folks in our community. But, you know, the old job housing ratios, you know, were based on factors that, you know, are regional, and they touch on many, many, many things. So I think, you know, for council, planning commission, you know, we should have a charrette. We should have a design conference where we talk to our community and really flesh out some really creative ideas on how to solve affordability in housing.
Thank you, David. Let's go to Peter.
So the issue of job creation has been going on for years. And there's a few studies on how to create more jobs for Marina. So you look at the plus for Marina is, you know, it's beautiful scenery, safe, you know, not much traffic jam. But on the negative side is, yeah, the housing cost is so high. And Marina still has a lot of vacant land for new offices, for new industry, you know? And if you look at why Ryan Ranch in Monterey, you know, was so successful, maybe we need to create some seat, you know, users in Marina and let's come up with some kind of, you know, incentive subsidies. And for the worker housing, you have to go vertical, you know, real high density to reduce the cost. You know, that's one way. You cannot have single-family home with, you know, 800,000 plus. You have to build condo and apartment, let, you know, let's add a place and go to four, five, or six-story intensity. So it makes it affordable for middle-income earners. So that's one possibility. And now you have to change your zoning code, you know? Let you look at the old downtime Marina Del Monte and reservation, and you just have the redevelopment plan there. You know, you need to go very high so they can afford an apartment showing, you know, $1,000. Yes, that's how this job will come to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And the last word on this question goes to Brian.
You for the question. So I think we need to attract a diverse set of jobs and certainly allow small businesses to thrive. I hate to parrot what my fellow applicants have said, but certainly that is absolutely fundamental. But we need to attract jobs that allow people to improve upon their skills, have that on-the-job training and better themselves, once again, right? So maybe you're working for a certain company in our city, and you start out as a metal fabricator, right? And after a couple of years, you go to be a manager. And you might know what company I'm talking about, but after that, maybe you become a pilot or an aviation expert. So really having those companies, attracting those companies that allow people to move up the ladder and improve their on-the-job skills. You know, COVID has been a really interesting experiment for the country. We are having this meeting in ways that, two years ago, a year ago, we were unwilling to have. And there are some hidden blessings. One of the things that has happened is we have opened up Marina to millions of jobs throughout the country. And so I think as a city, we need to learn or we need to find ways to ensure that our residents have high-speed, affordable internet in their homes so that they can work from home, they can apply for these jobs that may be in other locations, and really kind of explore the opportunities to allow people to really broaden their ability to work in jobs really in any location. And then finally, I'll say, you know, we have an incredible recreation department in the city. And maybe, you know, we need to partner with that recreation department and find ways to teach kids about the importance of deciding what job field they want to go into, explore different careers, and just really kind of incentivize them to look towards the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, would someone like to offer up the next question?
I'll ask a question. So it's required each year as we are doing budget, although now we're doing a two-year budget, that the city manager presents to council for consideration a balanced budget, meaning the expenses in that year budget do not exceed the income or the revenues in that year budget. What is your position with regard to a balanced budget and why?
And we'll start with that good question to be answered by David.
Thank you, Mayor Proten, for that great question. You know, the one expression you hear, "A man's reach should exceed his grasp for what's ahead him for." But I think in terms of city finances, we really have to be on guard to make sure that our revenues are more than adequate for our expenditures. So I would be a very tight fiscal hawk with regard to our budget. I believe that the impacts of COVID, and I'm fearing that we may be entering in a second wave. We hadn't gone through the first wave, but I'm fearing that we may be required to do another shutdown because of the close proximity people are going to be forced into as the weather changes and the opportunity for a viral spread increases. So I think it's going to be really important that we, I'm glad the city adopted a two-year budget as opposed to a single year. I think that gives us some distance and vision. I think with our city, you know, we've had some tremendous growth in terms of retail and our tax authority. But I'm fearful that in the next four or five months, we could see a serious decline in our ability to generate revenues. And so I think as a council, we're going to have to continue to come up with more creative ways to supplement in the revenue that the city needs. So, yes, I am definitely in favor of balanced budgets. As a city, we can't run a deficit budget. We have to submit and complete a balanced budget. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Let's go to Peter.
So my position is that I support the balanced budget. Because if I don't support it, then the problem is getting bigger and bigger and cause more impact. You know, I looked at the city budget in the past, and the city ran out of money, ran out of reserves, and had to lay off even firefighters and police officers, and everybody upset. And nothing the city council can do. Look at your current two-year budget right now. You approve a $5 million, you know, none of project, project, you know, can yield for discretionary. And, you know, now what you have, you probably have about $1.5 and $2 million left for the remaining fiscal year. And probably you may run out, you know, to zero by July 1st. So see how important that is for you to have a balanced budget. And as I mentioned previously, because of the COVID, you know, we have to have Plan A with, you know, some realistic revenue and work on that to create expenditure. And we also have to have Plan B, the worst case, and we have to solution ready for that uncomfortable scenario. But without that, you know, we just create a lot of problem and upset the resident and, you know, upset a lot of current services. And if you get the people involved right now, it's much better for you to adopt the next two-year budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. We'll go to Brian.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Proten Morton. You know, in my personal life, I'm fiscally very conservative, maybe risk averse. I've heard a well-respected member say that we treat the people's money like we treat our own. I think there's something to be said for that. You know, I'm thrilled that we have a surplus in the budget right now, but I too am fearful of a recession. You know, in short, you know, I want to treat the people's money as if it was my own. In general, that means a balanced budget. And I completely support the way that we've done business for some time now. But I'm not going to sit here and say that there might not ever be a time or a place where, as a council, you know, the council needs to decide on a different paradigm. So I'm certainly open-minded to that. But at the end of the day, I'm very fiscally conservative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. And Duchan, I think you have the last word on this.
Oh, well, yeah. I would like to first thank all the current and past council members who actually did vote the balanced budget concept in. Because, you know, I remember that Marina, at some point in the past, did not have a balanced budget and ran into deficit, and that was a very dangerous situation. So that's one thing. The other thing is that I think that, and this is again a little extreme, I think that the balanced budget, based on the projected income for the next year, is not really a balanced budget. Because no one, if this group sat in December of last year and we discussed and said, well, what if there is a pandemic in March? And we do not end up working for six months? No one could have predicted that. However, things like that do happen. So when I'm thinking of a balanced budget, I'm thinking of a balanced budget based on real hard income, not on a projected income. Projected income is a nice-to-have, to be honest. That's something, you know, that's a credit card kind of life. And we've seen what a credit card kind of life has done to this country in 2007 and 2008. Okay, so I am, on that level, I'm extremely conservative. But, you know, I also understand that at certain extreme situations, the city may decide to go and, you know, do something because that's the only solution or that's the best solution in a short term. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Duchan. Would someone like to offer up the next question?
Frank, were you going to offer a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
So I have another, but I'm trying to give Lisa a turn.
No, I'm still formulating one.
Go ahead, Gil.
What is your position on incentives for developers? When, where, why, or why not?
And we'll go to Peter Lee for the first answer.
I think the city council needs to look at the incentive because, for example, the city, they approved the cost score. Even they, you know, they lost money in the first couple of years. But they made up even in just, I think, two and a half years. So for each development, the city council needs to look at the return of the development and see how much the city can, you know, subsidy or give incentive, lower fee or whatever. So it's go by case-by-case. Sometimes the potential is so high, you have to, you know, maybe spend a couple hundred thousand, $4 million. And then in the, you know, in the subsequent few years, you get it back and increase more. So look, say, for example, look at the Walmart side, right? Have a big vacant lot if developer coming with the, you know, commercial. And they said, okay, you know, I will open this store, create 100 jobs. But I need you to, you know, subsidize me on fee or water billing permit, impact fee or some kind of loan so I can get, or we have to look at. We just cannot say no for any project, you know? So look at the Marriott Hotel. Did we get any money back and more revenue? And look at the, you know, those, the development, how much money we get back? So we need to look in case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Let's go to Brian.
Thank you again for the question, Vice Chair Morton. It's a really good question and frankly, one that I anticipated. It's been a hot button issue in Marina in recent years. You know, in the military, we have a term called bluff. It's bottom line up front. And the two issues, the bottom line up front is that there's two very hot topic issues that we've addressed recently. One is the Marriott Hotel, and another is the movie theater. So I want to address those first. I want to say that I had concerns about incentivizing those particular businesses from the start. Uh, and I had my own reasons for doing that with the movie theater. I, I felt movie theaters were a dying business. It's going to be really interesting to see what happens, uh, now that COVID has, has hit us hard. What happens to the movie theater that we have in Marina? Maybe it'll thrive, maybe it won't. Uh, with the hotel, you know, there was, um, this perception or, or discussion, the hotel would shut down if we didn't incentivize and it would become this big abandoned bankrupt building. Again, history has proven that the hotels appears to be thriving. Don't know if we could have predicted that or not, but what I do want to say is that I'm not against the idea of incentives in general. But I, what we need, what the council needs to do is come up with a framework of how they will decide whether a, a particular project is worth an incentive. And so that we don't have this illusion of creating favoritism. Uh, we don't have this illusion of, oh, I think, you know, this is a really good idea, dirt bike, you know, track, let's incentivize that, you know? What is that framework of basic ideas that will guide the council in determining whether an incentive is appropriate or not? Uh, I think once the council does that, it may be a little bit easier to address this issue in the future. It will still be challenging. But, uh, the last thing I'm going to say is that, you know, again, I'm concerned when we incentivize business, it disadvantages maybe some other business that may have wanted to come here. That if they had the same opportunity, they would have done an incredible job. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Brian. Let's move to Duchan.
Sorry, wrong button. Um, so yes, I, um, I have to say that, you know, I agree with what Peter and what Brian said. Um, I, I also think that, you know, we should, or the, the, the council actually should come up with a set of, you know, as Brian said, a, a framework, a set of qualifying questions, if you will. You know, that, that we know, that we say, okay, what is, what is, what is the requirement from the city? How much, what is the, the timeframe? What is acceptable? What is not acceptable? With those, with those, uh, questions asked clearly and upfront, you know, uh, we would avoid, uh, the, the appearance of, uh, interests, improprieties or whatever. People would be less prone to, to question because, uh, they would approach the city, in an open, open manner. And that might work better for us in the long term. Should we give, should we give incentives? Probably. Not necessarily for every, uh, for every business. I, I agree that, and as you, as you remember, I was, I was against, uh, giving incentives to the hotel. Uh, I was in favor, uh, for the, uh, movie theater. Obviously, we will see, you know, hotel appears to be working okay. Uh, movie theater, we'll see what, what happens with it. But I mean, again, we need to have a, a set of values defined upfront that we use to, uh, to, to evaluate each specific case. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Duchan. And David, you have the last word on this?
Okay, thank you. Um, so the, the idea, the idea of incentivizing development, uh, I think is a developer, developer ploy in many ways. We, we have a jewel here in Marina and I think we have undervalued, uh, what we have here, uh, to our detriment. And seeking, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, givebacks on development fees or excusing, uh, certain types of, uh, 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 planned development, uh, you know, uh, incentives. I, I think we really need to step back and say, you know, what, what is it? What are our goals for our city? What is it that was most important to us? We've identified affordable housing. We've identified, uh, you know, making sure that, um, uh, medical needs of our citizens are cared for. There's got to be a way that, you know, we can approach development projects with an eye towards what our city really wants. And instead of just giving away a police position or a fireman position's worth of incentive, we translate that into something that is really going to be beneficial down the road. There, there is not a downside to, you know, to, to how we incentivize this. But on the surface, I think, uh, uh, you know, what we have here in the city, uh, we have, uh, undervalued, I think, for too long. We've given away too much and gotten, I don't think, a reasonable return on investment for, for what we, uh, we've given them. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, Lisa, did you have a question you'd like to offer or somebody else, if not Lisa?
I actually have two, but I'll start with one and I guess we'll do one last round, maybe. Um, what, what, um, what three steps would you take to put our city on firmer financial footing? Some of that's been touched upon, but I'd like to get that answer a little more clear.
All right. Uh, let's start with Brian on that one.
Thank you. So three steps. Um, you know, this, this is a complex question and, you know, it's one that I would, you know, certainly want to research as par for the course for me. And I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to be held to what I'm about to say, but, you know, I think there's some general steps. And that is, you know, look at where our current revenue comes from and how can, um, we, for example, a huge percentage of our revenue comes from TOT tax. How can we make sure that we not only capture what we've already got, um, but increase that, that element of revenue? But also I think we need to look at, uh, you know, taxes that are, have, I think it's called tax leakage. So taxes that are being leaked from our city and going elsewhere, whether it's people that go shopping in a, a different city because they perceive that the stores are better there. They perceive that the tax rate is lower there. Um, we need to take a really careful look at that and ensure that people who live in Marina are staying in Marina to shop and the money, um, from people that are visiting is coming into Marina and not a, a neighboring city. You know, and lastly, um, I, I just think that we need to be really careful where, where we spend. You know, when we receive these funds, uh, from a particular revenue source, um, you know, we need to treat it as if it's hard-earned money because it is. And, um, need to just be really fiscally prudent on, on where that money goes. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Brian. Let's go to Duchan.
So it is, it is a complex, it is a complex issue. There is no question. But, you know, um, again, I think that, to, uh, to piggyback on what Brian just said, I think that one way of, of achieving that would be to actually stimulate some, some other, uh, businesses to come into Marina. Because the issue, if, if you remember, and I'll, I'll backtrack just a, just a few years back. If you remember, we've had very heated discussions about the restaurants in, in, in the mall, the current, the, the current development that we have, uh, next to the hotel. And, you know, what happens? Will it get developed? You know, whatever. Apparently, that specific segment of the mall is doing very well, even today, even in COVID. You know, that every time you drive past, the, the parking lot is full and all of these businesses are operational. So we need to be, again, we need to be a little bit more creative. Maybe we should, maybe we should try and entice, uh, a large, uh, supermarket to come in. You know, because between, between, uh, between Lucky's and, and, uh, the other one, we really do not have too much of a choice. Maybe we should get Aldi's or someone like that. I know that, you know, Trader Joe's is, you know, elitist, although we would all love to see it here or, you know, um, other, uh, high-end, uh, chains. But maybe we should, maybe we should get something similar to that to come in and, and keep the, the audience here, something you make, something to make Marina more unique, which would generate more, more income for the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Duchan. David?
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Berkeley for that question. Um, I think, uh, the two steps I would probably, uh, will look at our, uh, you know, review our CIP, uh, projects, you know, what's, uh, what have we committed to and what has been identified as a, as a necessity? I think two, uh, we want to review our estimated budget, uh, figuring out where we are in our budget cycle. But how close are we to our estimated? What are our actual, um, are we realizing the goals that we established? And three, uh, this is a concept that, uh, I think many county governments have adopted. Uh, and it's where they, they identify, um, uh, budget items. They tie it directly to projects that, that come up on agenda items. And so they, they try and make sure that, uh, what's being done is, is, is been identified as, you know, this is going to get us closer to what we've identified as what we want, uh, as an organization. I think a lot of times things come through and then we figure out, oh, well, we can pay for it or no, we can't pay for it. So, um, I think those would probably be the three, uh, things that I would want to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Peter, you have the last word on this?
Yes, uh, to have a balanced and, uh, realistic budget is very important for the resident because they expect, you know, certain level of service. They don't want to drop level of service to them. And then you have, uh, you know, the employees, you know, they want to have, uh, their job, uh, secure. And you have developers and other agency, they want to see that Marina have a, you know, very secure budget. So the first step is, uh, have to estimate, uh, on the revenue, you know, very realistic and estimate the revenue we have for next two year. Second step is to, uh, best estimate is expenditure for two year. And then you have to set, uh, you may have a policy and set the reserve for the city for the next two year. And then the expenditure and, uh, reserve have to be equal to revenues. And, uh, that's the plan A. But, you know, normally you don't have a plan A, you know, all the time. So you have to have plan B. Plan B is the worst case. You have the emergency and contingency. You have to spend, uh, tons of money, hour to budget. So you have to set up the, uh, plan B to, you know, like, you know, the COVID. And then, uh, for the two-year budget, yeah, it's a normal practice. You have to have monthly, uh, you know, monthly expenditure review and then, uh, you have to adjust every six month a year. So in, in order to have a, uh, fairly confident and, uh, stable budget. And that's what I suggest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Okay, Frank O'Connell, did you, Councilmember O'Connell, would you like to ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city is considering and has been for years, the extension of the runway at the airport. What do you see to be the benefits as well as the negative aspects of an extension of the airport as it relates to the city, the runway of the airport, excuse me?
And so this would be, uh, Duchan starting us off.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's, that's actually an issue that, that, that has concerned me, um, for a while now. Because I, you know, I'm trying to understand what the city is really trying to do with the airport. And that has never been really clear. The airport is an asset, granted. However, the airport as it is today is just a dead weight and nothing more. You know, it, it is basically, uh, everything but the airport. Extending the runway, uh, theoretically would bring, uh, different businesses would allow larger planes to land and all that. Now, if, if there was really need for that, right now, we have, we have the, uh, the Monterey Airport that, which is a regional airport that basically handles 99% of all air traffic in the area. Even, even the Naval Postgraduate School Flight Club is out there. Okay? So, uh, we got, we got the commercial flights there, we got the, the business flights there, and we got the, the, the private aircraft and, and, and the club there. Marina, right now, does not have any of that. If Marina had a prospect of attracting some of that, a realistic prospect, a written promise, that would make sense. Because Salinas has an airport as well, which is agricultural related primarily. Okay? So having three airports within 20 miles is a little bit too much by my thinking. And I do not know, obviously.
Excuse me, Duchan. Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Would someone else, let's see, let's talk about time here. It's, uh, eight minutes before 10:00. And our council agenda doesn't specify any time for the council members to make any comments. It goes right into, after the questions and answers we're doing now, it goes right into, uh, commencing voting. So A, do you want to try to wrap this up by 10 o'clock? B, do you want council to have an opportunity to comment? And C, do you want to ask more questions? Counsel, let's, uh.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I missed something, but I don't think anyone else got to answer the question about the runway extension, other than Duchan.
All right. Thank you. I'm so sorry. Uh, so we'll go to David Burnett next. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Councilman O'Connell for the question. Um, I, full disclosure, I've spent, uh, many hours speaking to Jeff Purshu, our airport services manager, uh, about, uh, ways to utilize how Marina could really capitalize on, on, uh, this jewel, which is our airport. Uh, full disclosure, I, I live at the end of that runway. So any development, any increase in development on that runway is going to impact me directly. But, um, you know, airports, universities, uh, they have a very, very, uh, interesting knock-on effect for, for a city. Uh, if you have those two in combination, uh, you, you tend to have, uh, a lot of maybe unanticipated, uh, revenue growth or revenue opportunity. So, um, I, I think an extension of the runway, uh, would be something that would, uh, definitely be, um, or should be considered. Um, but I would like to see this again, you know, in context of a, of a vision of a future for our city. I, I think if we, you know, we do this and, and we don't follow it up, we don't support it, uh, then, you know, that expenditure and that opportunity is wasted and maybe it's gone. I think, you know, talking about the airport, uh, you know, we have to consider that, you know, whatever we do, we have to think about the impacts on Joby. I think Joby has a major, major role in, in the future of Marina if we, if we handle it right. So, um, I, I, I'm not, uh, giving you a direct answer. I realize that. But I just think that, you know, uh, isolating one particular item, uh, without giving it a good context, uh, uh, doesn't really give you much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. And to prevent us, uh, rushing, I'd like to make a motion that we consider, to continue at least until 10:15 tonight, just so that when we get to the 10 o'clock hour, we don't have to interrupt again.
Second.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to comment on that motion to extend until 10:15 tonight? Looking for any hands to go up on the public side? Not seeing any, uh, we'll go ahead and close public comment. If we could have a roll call, please, Anita?
Councilmember Berkeley?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Morton?
Yes.
Mayor Delgado?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That motion passes four to zero. Let's continue with Peter and then Brian on the issue of runway extension.
So the, uh, the airport runway extension has been, uh, discussed and, uh, revealed for many years. And it's part of the airport CIB and it's, you know, it's shown in the airport master plan there. So if, if you look at the, uh, the pros and if you extend the runway, you may, uh, attract, you know, business for the vacant land around the airport, you know, because one of the complaint from, uh, people is, you know, I, uh, the airport too short. So there's. So that's, uh, one pro. And then, uh, if the FAA, uh, pay for 80 or 90% of the cost of the runway extension, it will be a plus for the, uh, for the airport, you know? I don't think the, uh, the airport has, uh, money to extend the runway. And then if you look at the, uh, the impact of the con, so it's, uh, it's also been addressed because it's, we, uh, you know, you have bigger airplane and, uh, they have, you know, bigger noise and then you have a certain FAA requirement, then, uh, one, uh, one of the requirement, every time they take off and they have to, uh, you know, turn, uh, turn right to miss on the houses there. But, uh, that's typical at, uh, the airport too, like, you know, LAX, uh, this will be handled. But, uh, uh, whether, uh, the, uh, the impact, uh, resident will support, uh, the airport runway is another question. But I think overall, if you want to look at the, uh, you know, a bigger future for Marina, you know, I probably, uh, support the airport extension and, uh, with on the mitigation on the noise and impact to the resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And, uh, Brian, you have the last word on this?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember O'Connell. As I mentioned, I've worked in the aviation industry. In fact, I currently work for an aviation company. And I, I really do see the tremendous, uh, potential of the airport. As aviation uses expand, um, with, with technology, it really would be a differentiator for the city of Marina, uh, unlike, uh, many surrounding cities. With Joby, the prospect really got a lot stronger to attract some of these uses. I, I'm really hopeful that, um, that potential sustains itself over time. Peter mentioned, and I was also going to mention the, the, you know, the FAA funding sources. You know, if, if the city can receive funding to do some of these projects from, uh, a federal agency, you know, that's always a plus. Funding obviously is a big issue. We're going to have to look at that as a city to determine if we have the money to, to pay our fair share of that project. The gives of an extension, of course, would be noise. You know, I don't think it would be any worse than it was when the, the airport was an active military airstrip. Uh, but nonetheless, it, it's an environmental impact, uh, that needs to be considered. Uh, we're very lucky, our airport is surrounded to the west by a, a huge open space. To the east by agriculture land currently. So the, the good news is, is, um, you know, it's not going to greatly affect a large number of our residents, but it will affect some and we'll need to look at that. But I'm a huge proponent of aviation uses, um, and, and I, I completely support that. I have heard rumors that maybe we should, you know, pave that whole area over and build houses on it. You know, I, you know, I, I'm open-minded to, to talk about any possibility, but it, it just seems like it would be a waste of such a great asset for the city of Marina. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, counsel, so we had a few questions. Uh, where, where do you want to go from here type of questions? We, so let me just offer it up to other council members for your input. That is whether we should, uh, just commence voting, whether we should ask some more questions or whether each of us council members should take some time to make some comments, although those comments aren't part of our prescribed steps.
I personally, uh, I would think we should go to the vote because they have to be sent in and it has to be announced. And as a swearing in, I believe this evening, I'm not certain of that. But, um, being, uh, someone who does not love computers, I'm a little concerned about my ability to get this ballot over to the appropriate people. But, uh, I think we just proceed with, uh, the voting at this time. Thank you.
Is there room for one more question?
You mean a round of questions, Lisa?
Yeah, and we can do it. I can make it be a one minute.
Okay.
That's preferred.
All right. Gail, do you have input?
Um, I'm fine with the one more question and then going to voting. So I, I think we're doing these ballots because it's supposed to be semi-anonymous until we each vote. So I'm not sure what the comments would be.
Yeah, I think the comments would be persuasive, et cetera. So if that is not the intent of this.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead. No, uh, so, okay. So I, I'd like to ask a little question and then maybe we do a round of votes. And if we, my understanding is the votes, we need, uh, three or four votes for the first, to make, to make a final decision. And then if we don't have that, then maybe we have comments.
And city attorney, would it be inappropriate or appropriate to have comments, given that it's not listed on the agenda and given that maybe persuasion is not part of the intent tonight?
The council has wide latitude in this process. Uh, and I think we've said that from the very beginning. Uh, we, you know, there's, there's nothing, I'll say legally, uh, that would constrain, uh, comments on the, on, on the agenda and this matter is on the agenda, are not disallowed just because of the simple fact they, they weren't included as a specific time. So council has latitude, if, if that's what you prefer.
Well, my thought is that the kit, the public had a lot of time and the council, the candidates had a lot of time and us elected officials were able to ask several questions, but they were very respectfully questions. Normally, when we have agenda items, the council does have some prerogative to make some comment. But, uh, I would prefer that each of us make a two-minute comment to having another round of questions. But, uh, I may be the only one of the four of us to think that way. So let me just turn it over to the other three of you.
So I, I would like to have the question. Lisa did announce she had two questions. She could have lumped them together, but she didn't. So I'm interested in the question.
Okay. Frank and Lisa, are you as well interested in the question?
Yes. Yeah, the question and then the, the vote is the way I look at it.
Okay. All right, Lisa, please proceed.
Okay, so, um, what does the phrase reimagining policing mean to you when building trust between police and communities of color?
And I'm sorry, I forgot to do my job here. Uh, it's going to start with David Burnett's.
Thank you, Councilperson Berkeley for that question. Uh, full disclosure, uh, our club recently hosted a three-part seminar on reimagining policing. And it was a, uh, it's available, uh, on Zoom playback. Uh, and I can, uh, give you details on that. But for me, um, one of the things that came out of the, uh, this summer, uh, with the Black Lives Matter, uh, protest, was this idea of defunding the police. And I think on its surface, people hear that and they say, oh, you want to get rid of the police. But what it, what it really means for me is reimagining what policing is. So if, if we don't have police, uh, going out for homeless calls or, uh, on all domestic violence, uh, it seems to me that there's going to be some revenue available to put into counseling and to other a- areas that would, uh, uh, benefit folks. Uh, you know, there's an old Japanese expression, uh, when your only tool is a hammer, all of your problems look like nails. And that's not to disparage the policing, it's a tough job. I mean, you, you have to protect yourself, you have to protect your community. But in many instances, I see an opportunity for, uh, social services, for counseling, for someone to come in there and actually solve a problem instead of handcuffing it and taking it away. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we'll go to Peter next.
I, I see, uh, reimagining between, uh, police and the, uh, resident is way to look at, uh, to, to do different than they currently do, you know? You know, sometimes our police just, uh, see that they just, uh, they have to enforce the laws. But then, you know, and then it, uh, it improves and, you know, uh, some agency looking at the, uh, community policy and, you know, start working with the school to offer school resources. And then, you know, some other agency, you know, go to education and partnership with, uh, different organizations. So the, the way I see, uh, reimagining is, you know, finding new ways to have the better understanding between the police and the, uh, resident. So that's one of the, uh, solution, uh, to, you know, prevent misunderstanding and prejudices, you know, between, uh, different partners. And, uh, instead of, uh, you know, send, and no input from the communities, maybe, uh, there's some, uh, community group and can, uh, look at the action of the police and, you know, have some kind of input into the agency. So, you know, to try to fire workable solution. So that's how I see the, uh, reimagining works with the, between the police and the, uh, community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. We'll go to Brian next.
Thank you for the question, Dr. Berkeley. You know, I, I, I've been a proponent of police commissions before this current tragedy. I mentioned that in my video. Um, I think there's a lot that can be done to reimagine. You know, we've talked about Assembly Bill 232, we've talked about eight can't wait and why these things are important to kind of revamp, um, the policies and procedures that exist in our police departments. I've been looking at all of these things as they've been discussed in the media, as they've been discussed among the community and, and have been thinking about how police departments can be reimagined. You know, the problem we have in Marina is that our police department runs really lean. You know, police department is a small percent of our budget compared to other cities. And so there's not a lot of money to divert from our existing police department into these other programs. But I, but I do think there really needs to be a focus on, you know, the pause the calls effort. What do we call 911 for? What do we call non-emergency for? Why, why is it that when I see, um, the individual that's living under the bathrooms at Lockpatten Park as we speak, um, I feel like my only resource is the police department? How do we advocate to our residents that there may be other resources for these folks? And, um, you know, calling the police isn't necessarily always the right answer. So again, I'm a huge supporter of our law enforcement here in Marina. I think they do an incredible job. Candidly, one of the best police departments I've ever, uh, encountered. I, I've called on them for service in the past and I can promise you I will call on them for service in the future. But I really, as a city, and especially as our city's police department, would really like for them to, to, as you say, reimagine what their duties are, what they want to be doing. Get them involved in the discussion. Um, and, and let's have some really candid conversations about, um, how this thing gets reimagined and, uh, resources are, are, are spent on different elements.
Thank you, Brian. And Dushan, you have the last word on this question?
Well, um, that is, you know, reimagining police, I don't know if we need to really reimagine the police. Um, I think that we need to, to, to basically look at what the police does and what we think the police should be doing. And make that, and make that the, uh, the priority on how we look at the issues. Because, you know, the police has the function of keeping, keeping order. Okay, that's its primary function. Social work is not police work. We've turned the police into social workers, but they're not social workers. And, you know, we've seen that over and over. I mean, you know, we see that around the country, but we've seen it also in Marina a couple of years ago. I remember that I was, I was really upset when I realized that, uh, members of the Marina Police Department were involved at CSU MB, uh, when they tased, uh, a, a, a student who obviously had some psychological issues. Okay, now, was that the proper way of doing it? I don't think so. I don't think a taser is a solution to any psychological issue. Just like a gun is not, uh, uh, an answer. Okay, so we need to look into what resources are available. And I, from what I understand, the county already has some resources that could be made available to the city to, uh, unburden the police from that social, social work element. So we should, we should actually explore that and maybe try and implement that. Maybe the, the state has something similar. So, you know, those are the things that we need to look at. We, because the police is already overburdened. And, you know, that's what we need to do. We need to give them some breathing air. Thank you.
All right. Thanks to all of the applicants tonight. You've all done such a wonderful job. I'm sure we would do well with any of the four of you joining the city council. So thank you to everybody tonight. Great questions, great public comment. Now we're going to move into the balloting. And the first round ballot, you, each of us will check the name of only one applicant and then we'll sign it, we'll date it, and then we'll take a picture of it. And then we will send it to, in an email to Anita Shepherd Sharp, our PD CD clerk, who will then count the ballots, et cetera. So at this time, if you could fill out your ballot and email a picture of it, that's what we would do now.
And don't forget to CC, um, Matt.
Yes, correct.
I forgot to CC Matt, so I sent my email a second time to both Anita and Matt. Matt, can you play the Jeopardy theme music?
I don't have that handy, but we can sing it.
Okay, Lane, you're our city manager. Can you please sing or hum the Jeopardy theme music? David's volunteering. David, go ahead. You're muted, David, but go ahead and you can sing it or mute it.
No, I was just encouraging Lane not to.
That's good. You, you don't want to have me even hum it.
Yes. Silence is golden, right? Uh, we can, we can take this moment, this opportunity, we've been talking all night, you know, just to, ah, breathe deeply. There we go.
There you go.
Doesn't it go? That's it.
Very good, Frank.
Very nice. Round of applause for Councilmember O'Connell.
Thank you.
Our next ballot rate, our next ballot will be who should be our dedicated singer for future meetings?
Definitely not me.
And we can make a write-in for that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
My wife just yelled at me to stop, so, um, that tells you something.
Oh, there we go. Somebody thought of technology. Ah ha, it was Tina brought us the real deal. Well, this process is a lot more robust than flipping a coin, which is what happened in Pacific Grove when they had this process and they couldn't break a three-to-three tie. They flipped a coin and Carmelita Garcia won the coin toss. But that was equitable and equal. I guess it was inclusive.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, make a motion to extend for until 10:30.
I'll second that motion. Does any member of the public wish to comment on that motion? To extend to 10:30? Not seeing any hands go up. Let's come back to Anita, who's busy multitasking. Can someone give us a roll call vote, Matt or Lisa?
I can roll call. Councilmember Berkeley?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes.
Can I have a final count?
Go ahead, Anita.
I have one for Brian McCarthy, three for David Burnett, zero for Dusan, zero for Peter Lee.
Okay, do, is it part of process to disclose where the ballots came from or to show the ballots?
Yes, the ballots will be put up on screen in just a minute.
So the deputy city clerk has counted the ballots and announced the votes. Congratulations to David Burnett. And now the original signed ballots will be turned to the deputy clerk as soon as possible, become part of the official record. I don't see the part about showing the ballots, but I thought I saw that earlier.
The ballots are public record, Mr. Mayor.
So are they to be showed right now? I'm fine either way. I'm just trying to follow the.
Yes, Matt will help to get them up and show them right now.
They are public record.
So that is whose ballot?
That's mine.
That's Lisa's ballot for David Burnett.
Have you seen the second ballot?
No, I don't believe so.
Nope.
Well, I can save us a little bit of time. I voted for Brian McCarthy, so that means everybody else voted for David Burnett. And again, congratulations.
Frank O'Connell.
Hey.
Thank you again, everyone. I thought that was a very fair process and all the four applicants did a really good job representing themselves. There is my ballot for Brian McCarthy.
And I'm not positive which one I'd already shown now because they all look the same when you're looking at the screen.
I did vote twice. I only saw one of my ballots.
So there's Councilman, Mayor for Tim Martin.
Okay. Just brief comment to say that all four of you were extraordinarily qualified and measured in your comments tonight, and it was a very, very difficult decision. It's been a pleasure to hear all of you. I've, I've worked with all of you in different ways and look forward to continue to do that.
Congratulations to David Burnett.
Yes.
Am I to swear David in now or how are we doing that?
That's, that's what we provided, I believe, in the procedure that once the ballots were canvassed, as they say, or tallied, deputy city clerk has just done, it would then be appropriate to declare Mr. Burnett appointed and to administer the oath of office.
And Bobby, we also just need to adopt the resolution doing that.
Somebody please make a motion.
A motion that we approve the ballots, electing or appointing David Burnett to a two-year city council term.
Second.
Any member of the public wish to comment on that motion? We'll come back to council. Christina Dirksen, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just like to say that 24 people voted in favor, I'm sorry, of the public of Mr. McCarthy and seven for Mr. Burnett, and I am very disappointed that you did not listen to the public. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Christina. Next we go to Paula and then Jacqueline Simon. Paula Pallow, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to say a thank you to all of the people who were there this evening, public and the candidates. I think the candidates presented well and I am not disappointed in the results. I would be disappointed if the other three candidates walked away and didn't continue to contribute to the city in the ways that they have and the ways that they can. As to the public, it's not a popularity contest. You know, some people run better campaigns and get more people to come to the council. This was purely a judgment of the council and I think that the discussion afterwards and responses to the questions was more informative than the comments that some of us made. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Jacqueline Simon?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jacqueline.
Great, thank you. First of all, I want to compliment all of the candidates. You all very eloquently shared your comment, your positions, your platforms. I've been in government and governance for a long time and I believe we need to have continued compassionate responses and participation. I heard no negativity and issues that, in my opinion, normally come up when you have issues that you're dealing with in many, many different areas. So I compliment that process. However, I do want to definitely push back at the first comment made by Christina Medina Dirksen. It does not matter how many people came on tonight. You have a democratic process. There are, I believe, what, over 21,000 people in your community? And if 24 people stood up for your candidate, of which I happen to like, I respect him, he rocks, I said that. He needs to continue to be a part of it. But you, and I don't want to personalize this, but you personalized it. So I want to say, I want to blow back on that and say, this process was positive and it was good. And I think you need to continue, all of you, to work together. We have a lot to do in this community. We have a lot to do in the country, but let's keep it positive, let's keep it professional and not personal. I'm so tired of the personal, the barbs, the little, you know, what's your education and have you run before and what was the outcome? We're talking about here now, 2020. So let's grow up and let's look at the bottom line of what we need to all do to work together to save our nation and our country and this community. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. We go to Greg Fury next.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome back, Greg.
Well, thank you. Couple of things. I learned a lot about each of you and I, again, I will echo whatever everyone else said, which is my hat's off to you for putting yourself out there. I'll echo people's comments about Brian. And Brian, I don't know what Gil Morton's plans are in the future, but if you plan to run for mayor in 2022, I will pledge my support in every way possible to you. You're a very impressive candidate and person. I've listened to you speak many times. We'll speak again. There's a few things I'd like to discuss with you that I have taken issue with, but again, I really appreciate all your contributions. David, 17 years of contributing to this community in a very quiet, understated, humble way. You've shown leadership when I was on planning commission. I have an enormous amount of respect for you. You didn't campaign for this position the way Brian did, but I think you certainly have earned it. And I also want to comment very briefly on what I consider snarkiness by the first commenter. There's too much of it. It's torn this community apart. I personally feel there's a source for it. It's unnecessary. And I think either, I think David, in his Buddhist way, will bring a good amount of quiet compromise and collaboration and hopefully bring the council together in a closer manner and the community together. And just as I think Brian has, I want to congratulate you, Brian, Peter, Dusan. And thank you, council. I think it was a very, very good exchange of information and ideas. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Greg. Let's go to Lizbeth Fisher.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Delgado and council, city council members. I am disappointed, not surprised. And my question is, what does the public need to do to be heard? How many letters do we need to write? What do we need to say? I feel very unheard. What does a candidate need to do to show that he is the perfect candidate for this position? I would like to congratulate the new council member, David Burnett, and I'd like to thank all candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizbeth. Okay, anybody else with public comment before we close? Public comment? All right, let's go ahead and close public comment. I'll take Lizbeth's question. It's kind of a hypothetical, so we have a motion on the floor and I again want to extend congratulations to David Burnett and to everyone that spoke tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I see David's, David is raising his hand like he wants to speak, so does he have that?
Yes, David, let's treat, let's go back to public comment and treat David as a public commenter. Since he hasn't been sworn in yet, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council member. I want to personally thank all of the participants, all of the candidates this evening. I think we all learned a lot about each other's traditions and I truly believe that every one of us are equally qualified. And I want to echo my support for, for Brian. I think he is a real asset in our community. I think the process has been long this evening, but possibly looking at the options available, I think it's probably worked out the best, the most democratic. But once again, I want to thank the council for paying your long attention on this and I thank the public for, for their participation. And again, thanking all the candidates for who also participated.
All right, thank you, David. And to the other candidates, because you weren't on the public attendees list, like David Burnett, I did not look for you to be speaking, but we can consider you all public attendees at this point. Did any of the other candidates wish to talk? Brian McCarthy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just quickly, you know, I actually texted David before this meeting and I shared with him how much I can talk to him as the chair of the planning commission. He's a fantastic professional. I'm confident he is going to move our city forward and I'm looking forward to that. Peter Lay, you know, an amazing person that, you know, transparency is the name of the game for him. He ensures that the public is aware of public documents and I think that's been so valuable to the community. And certainly Dusan, the, you know, leader of the Marina kind of Facebook news page, you know, keeps us all in the loop and just such a great asset to our community on the different commissions that he has served on. Just really glad to be a part of this process, appreciate this from the public. It's been overwhelming and frankly, a little hard to process, you know, some, I don't even know it really spoke out in favor of me because they, you know, they've seen me act in a certain way. It's just been, been really enlightening. Congratulations to David and thank you all for allowing this process to take place tonight.
Okay, Peter, thank you, Brian. Peter or Duchan, if you're still with us, did you want to say anything? Go ahead, Duchan. You're muted right now.
Yes, so I would first and foremost like to congratulate David. That is a well-deserved selection and I'm pretty sure that the, that the current council will actually have, have a very successful cooperation with David and will move the city forward. I would also like to thank Brian and Peter, you know, for this absolutely exciting evening and all the contributions that both of them have made for the benefit of the city and everything else. And I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Bye-bye.
Okay, and Peter, before you go, let me, before you talk, Peter, let me ask the council to extend till 10:35. Because I think we said 10:30.
Second.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on that motion? All right, let's go to a roll call vote, please, Anita.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilmember Berkeley.
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes, and to the public comment, I saw Nathaniel Sawyer's hand go up and then down when I asked for public comment on the motion. So I think he and Tom Moore wanted to comment.
We also have to administer the oath, Mr. Mayor.
Right, I'm just responding to a couple of hands that I've seen come up after we closed public comment and that's why I'm not going to call on Nathaniel or Tom Moore at this time because we closed public comment a couple of minutes ago. But we do have, oh no, we didn't close public comment because Peter is part of public comment. So Tom and Nate, please keep your hands up and Peter, let's go to you next.
I'd like to congratulate David Burnett. You know, I worked with him on the campaign a couple of times in thank you to the city council for allowing me to apply for the vacant position and and thank you to Brian and Dusan for participation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter. Let's go to Nathaniel Sawyer and then Tom Moore.
I want to say, because over 25 people have messaged me on Facebook Messenger privately, I've been sharing this on my Facebook, but I wasn't really going to comment. It is what it is and I respect every single person that put their name out for disposition. I am one of those believers that what the people want should go. But I do respect and I love the fact that we do have a African-American, intelligent African-American on the city council, but I do hope moving forward that David is actually going to do things for the African-American community and not just use his skin tone as a way to say he is the, is including as an African-American person. I am really confused with how the process works for these type of things. I, we heard over and over again, the love and admiration for Brian. And again, I'm one of those people that what the people want and I heard all sorts of different sides advocating for Brian on the left and on the right, so it really speaks to how he is a bridge maker. And I hope that David can do the same thing, but also really truly fight for the black and brown community. I want to get to know him more. I like, all I can do is say I like the way he speaks and how intelligent he is. There's no reason to move backwards. We have to move forward now. Remember, this is our city. We have to build it up and not be divisive. So congratulations, sir, and I respect all of you who put your name in the hat. And Brian, you have a bright future ahead of you, sir. Keep moving, keep causing good trouble. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Nate, and good night. We'll go text to Tom Moore.
Yes, congratulations to David Burnett and I'd like to offer my heartfelt thanks to the other three candidates who took a chance and put their names forward. And then finally, I would like to thank the current city council members for refraining from causing the board of directors of Marina Coast Water District to have to go through the same thing that you've just gone through. Because if you'd picked Peter Lay, we would have had a vacancy on our board and it would have been the same thing all over again. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Tom. Lisa has her hand up, but we are now at 10:35, so we would have to motion again. Does someone want to make a motion to extend tonight's meeting?
Yep, I'll say that's just, how long does it take to swear people in? Like 10 minutes, five minutes?
So I, we go to 10:40 and go to the swearing in.
Not long. Second.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on that motion? Seeing no new hands going up, let's go to a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Berkeley.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Yes, again.
Mayor for Tim Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes. All right, thank you. So public comment is over. Lisa, was that why you had your hand up?
Uh, no, I actually wanted to take a minute and thank everyone who, who applied. There's so much heart and care for our city that it's incredibly moving. And I'm just, I'm so grateful for having the chance to get to know you and I hope that I'll be able to. and I hope that I'll be able to continue to get to know you, work with you and just continue to make Marina a better place. So I really thank you. This was, this was a tough, tough evening in so many ways. So thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to say that, give a special shout out to Brian. Brian, you've shown the fire in your belly that is very uncommon. You've shown a wide breadth of interest from speed limits to all the other things we heard tonight. You, almost more than anyone, have been coming to our city council meetings before you knew that we had a vacancy before, while Adam was still here. And so Adam, I'm sorry, so Brian, I cast my vote for you because of the outreach on the streets that you have been doing and I, and I wish you the best of luck. I think our council will do very well in the future if you were part of it. And I know that David Burnett is going to do a good job as well, but I just wanted you to know, Brian, why I cast my vote in your direction. Thank you for your, yours and everyone's participation tonight. Okay, so let's go to a roll call vote, please, on the motion. Is that right? We had a motion to, I've motioned to appoint David Burnett since he won the balloting. And then we do a swearing.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Delgado.
Yes. All right, congratulations one more time, David, and we'll see you soon. And now we move to the
Got to be sworn in.
I know, now we move to swearing you in.
All right, Dave, raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, David Burnett.
You've got to unmute yourself, David.
I, David Burnett.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the, you broke up a little bit there.
That you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Cali, of the state of California?
And the Constitution of the state of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the state of California?
And the Constitution of the state of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, you're sworn in. See me in the morning to sign your certificate.
Congratulations, David.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, in honor of David's new role in our, all of our lives, we will adjourn. And see you soon, David. I think we have a council meeting next Tuesday, is that right, Lane?
No. October 12th.
First Tuesday.
I have a quick question, I have a quick question for Bob Raffey. Since Bob, you're here. Do, do I need to step down from the planning commission tonight? What has to happen there? No, you, you're, assuming the office of city council member, you will, you will have left the, departed from the office of chair of the planning commission. So that, that position. Okay, so is there any formal notification? Do I need to send a letter or something? No. Okay. Thank you all.
All right, good night, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.